Board and this meeting is now open and good evening, welcome. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will have public comment in connection with the hearing on the redevelopment of the property at 10110 West Street, that is the old Carter Mill building for senior housing, which is the first item on our agenda. And first we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. And so when I, and then I'll introduce planning department and other town staff. And when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Well, planning board members, Adam Block.
Here.
Martin Jacobs.
Sorry, here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
So we have four members of our five member board here this evening, and that is a quorum. And for our planning department staff, we have our director of planning and community development, Lee Newman.
Here.
And assistant planner Alex Cle.
Here.
And we also have with us Clay Hutchinson, who is in the conservation department within the planning department, who is here to assist us with any technical issues we may have during this meeting. So as each agenda item is reached, I'll introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. And for those who are participating in the meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything you share or state will be a matter of public record. And if there are members of the public who, after the presentation of during this hearing on the West Street project, have comments or questions, we will bring you into the meeting as a participant. And if you wish to be seen, you know, just tap your video so you can be seen and make sure that you can be heard. And all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov unless otherwise noted. So the ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. And after speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions or motions. And all votes of this board will be by roll call. So the first, as I turn to the first item on our agenda, and it's very nearly 7:20, so we, your hearing won't officially start until 7:20, but I think it's appropriate to recognize those that are here for the team for 10110 West Street, the Carter Mill project. So we'll call their names and please identify yourself. Counsel for LCB Senior Living is attorney Roy Kramer.
Here.
And for LCB Senior Living, Lee Bloom.
Here.
Ted Doyle.
I'm here.
And then project engineer David Kelly.
Here.
Also, project engineer Brandon Lee.
Here.
Project architect Michelle Hobbs.
Yeah.
Also, project architect Anthony Vivarito. Is Mr. Vivarito here?
Yes.
Yes, good, thank you. Counsel, also another attorney, counsel for seller Louise Giannakis.
Here.
Landscape architect Ben LaFrance.
Here.
A consultant for the project, Margaret.
Here.
And traffic engineer Erin Fredette.
Here.
All right, so now it is 9:20, excuse me, 7:20. And I'll turn to the proponents, the applicants, I should say, to make their presentation to the board and to the public.
I move, I move that we waive the reading of the notice.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ralper for remembering that.
Second.
So we have a motion and I've got other motions too, I forgot, I should have given them at the beginning. Mr. Ralper has moved that we waive the reading of the public notice for this hearing. And Mr. Black has seconded that motion. I'll call for the roll call vote. So, Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Ralper.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
And the chair is I. And two more procedural motions. One is a motion. If we should encounter technical difficulties that make it impossible to continue this hearing and meeting, without further vote, the hearing and meeting is continued to tomorrow, April 21, at 5:30 PM. And furthermore, at this meeting right now, if I, the chair, have different, have technical difficulty that sometimes I have to zoom off and zoom on again because I can't be heard, something like that, our chair, Paul, our vice chair, Paul Alpert, will assume chairing the meeting.
Don't move.
All right, so we have Mr. Jacobs has moved that and
Second.
And Mr. Black has seconded, so we'll do the roll call on that. Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Ralper.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
And the chair is I. So we have those motions in effect. So now, now it's time to move to the presentation. Appreciate the help.
Is it okay if I share my screen now?
Yes.
Well, I, I'll start off, I'm Roy Kramer. And I represent the applicant, well, LCB Needham Landlord LLC. And tonight I'm going to refer to the applicant just as LCB. And what I'd like to do is to give a brief summary of the, this matter, point out the zoning relief that we're requesting, and then turn it over to the various specialties. We're not going to have everybody who is a presenter to give a formal presentation. But I anticipate that we'll hear from the project architect, the landscape architect, the civil engineer, and the, the traffic analysis. So just to give you, well, just to give you some background, as you all know, that thanks to the planning board, at last fall's town meeting, the zoning was changed to create the Avery Square overlay district, which enabled this project to move forward to tonight, which is the, the, the public hearing. The property in question is, is 4.298 acres located at the corner of Highland Avenue and West Street. It used to be occupied by Avery Crossing, which was a 60-unit assisted living memory care facility, and Avery Manor, which is 142-bed nurse skilled nursing facility, as well as 8,300 square feet of medical offices. The entire building and the great majority of the property is located in the Avery Square Business District and the Avery Square Overlay District. There's a small portion of the property to the south that's the single residence B zoning district. This building has been vacant since 2017. It's a three-story brick building of approximately 186,000 square feet. Outdoor parking areas to the south and west of the building and an indoor parking area. The original decision was in 1993, which was when the building was rehabbed and the nursing home and assisted living facility began operation and the medical offices began operation a couple of years after that. So this is an application for further site plan review, essentially to amend prior decisions. The last decision was in 2004. And what LCB is proposing to do is to create 72 independent living apartments and 83 assisted living and Alzheimer's memory care facility. The existing three-story building is going to remain and the existing footprint will not change. Consistent with the new bylaw, section 3.15, which created the overlay district, a partial fourth story is proposed to be added to create 10 of the proposed 72 independent living apartments. And as, as you all recall, consistent to with section 3.15 of the bylaw, the fourth story units are going to be well set back from the, the walls of the building, with the exception of the west side, which faces the railroad. And that's to minimize the view of the fourth floor from neighboring areas. The parking lot on the south is going to remain unchanged, except for some additional landscaping. And the parking lot on the west and is, which is adjacent to the railroad right away, will have some minor changes, including new landscaping. After the project is completed, there's going to be 149 parking spaces on site, which includes 115 exterior spaces and 34 garage spaces. The, the relief requested, it's a pretty short list. Number one, obviously, further site plan review under section 7.4 of the bylaw and the sections of prior decisions. The second is alteration of a not performing structure under section 1.4.6 of the bylaw. The structure is non-conforming in that the building is less than 50 feet from the residential district boundary, which is a current requirement under section 4.4.8.4. And it also predates section 4.4.9. It says that the primary street entrance to the building should be on West Street or Highland Avenue, where the, really the main entrance is through the major parking lot to the west. We also are requesting two special, special permits for use, which is one, the assisted living and memory care facility, two, the independent living apartments, and three is a building with multiple uses, i.e. the memory loss Alzheimer's and the independent living. With parking, we're not asking any waiver for the number of parking spaces because we have enough. In terms of the design criteria, the outside parking conforms with all dimensional requirements. Inside, there are two special permits that we're asking for. The first has to do with the width of maneuvering aisle. As you know, the building is supported by a number of steel supports in the basement, and they are 16 feet, eight inches apart from each other. So the maneuvering aisle is going to be 16 feet, eight inches in some cases, and I know there's one portion that's 16 feet, 10 inches. But it's just not practical to redo the building to, to accommodate that. And that, that waiver has been asked and granted a number of times in the past. The only other parking waiver we request is that there would like five tandem spaces in the, in the garage, which would require a waiver of 5.1.3H. And our, our intention is to limit those to, if an independent living family moves in who has two cars, which happens sometimes, then we'd like to assign those cars to a tandem space to minimize any difficulties with, you know, getting the back car out with the front. It'll all be done within the family. And so that's, that's the zoning relief that's requested. I've filed a separate letter that reviews the site plan review criteria and why we believe that this project meets all of the criteria. Instead of me reviewing that now, most of that will be taken up by the various specialists who are going to speak. So having said that, I'd like to ask David Kelly from Kelly Engineering Group, who is our project engineer, to talk about the civil engineering aspects and the drainage aspects of this project.
Great, thank you very much, Roy. For the record again, David Kelly with Kelly Engineering Group, and I just want to say to the board, it's a pleasure to be, before he went to be on this team for this really wonderful redevelopment of an existing building. Therefore, there isn't a tremendous amount of civil engineering involved because he just redeveloping the existing site and keeping things generally as they are. But if I could just quickly take you through, and I try, I'm going to try not to be repetitive. I think Roy did a nice overview of the site. But this, this is an orientation with Highland Avenue on the bottom. This is an existing initiatives plan. The, the plan is, is in, is, the building is in that tan color and the property line is, is in green on, on, on this, on this plan. The bottom of the plan is Highland Avenue, the right side, of course, it's West Street, and the top of the sheet is the railroad right of way. As Roy noted, there is a residential zone on the left side of this plan. I don't have the, the mouse to describe it, but it essentially runs through the center of that, of that parking lot that's on the left side or the south side of, of the site. The site is, as, as Roy also noted, primarily located within the Avery Square Business Zone, with the exception of that single residence B zone that's at that southerly portion of the site. And what I'd like to do is just quickly, some of you have heard, or some of you have not, and most of you are familiar with the property. But for those who are not, I just want to quickly take you through the property and how, how you would access it and, and see the various amenities today. If you were to enter from West Street, which is the top right on the plan today, and travel south, there are parking spaces on the left and right side of the driveway. And to the left, sort of in front of the building, between the building and West Street, there's a gated landscaped area that we will be remodeling, and I'll explain that in a moment. As you continue further into the site, the parking continues along the right-hand side all the way to the end of the site where the, where the building, where it contacts the building. And as you travel further in, on the left-hand side, there is a drop-off area today, which is the primary entry to the building. Beyond that, there's another landscaped area. And then there's an entry to the garage, which is about center in the building as you look at it. Thank you. And that, that, that garage entry is, has presumably not been used for some, some period of time. And as I'll explain in a moment, that, that garage entry will be removed and replaced with an exit at another portion of, of the, of the building. And as you continue further into the site, you come to that cul-de-sac area with the gazebo in the center that you're probably familiar with. The site and landscaping, I think, can best be described as tired. Ben LaFrance of Hawk Design will describe later the major improvements in the landscaping that are being proposed here, and they're substantial. At the end of the parking lot, as you probably know, there's an entry to the garage heading southbound. There, there are parking spaces in the garage today, obviously. And as you travel through, there's an, there's an exit or an entry on the south side of the building. So essentially you can travel from the north to the south through the building into the southerly parking lot. And that southerly parking lot's also directly accessed from Highland Avenue, as you probably know. If you're continuing around the building, Highland Avenue has an overgrown buffer strip between the sidewalk and the building. And it essentially hides the building as you, as you would travel on a Highland Avenue. So if we could just go to the next slide real quickly, Michelle, thank you. Thank you. So this is, this is the landscaping plan, which you'll be hearing much more in detail from. But I'm going to use this because it's a nice colored plan to help me take you through what's being proposed from a site standpoint. As, as explained, as will be explained by the other presenters this evening, the building will be completely renovated and the site will also be enhanced completely. When complete, there'll be 149 parking spaces on the site, as Roy noted. 115 of those will be outside and 34 will be inside. We note that there's 28 parallel parking spaces on the street today that are available, but we're not counting those in the numbers, the total of 149 that I noted a moment ago. So if we take the same trip through the site, again, you enter on West Street, we're adding four parking spaces on the left and one on the right as you enter. And the primary reason for that is that those are spaces that are most convenient to the main door of the building. And we felt it was important to add parking nearest the door for visitors and the light to be able to easy, easier access to building. Parking continues along the right-hand side as it, as it, as it all the way to, to the end of the site, as, as it does today. But that area is being enhanced, as, as you'll hear. On the left side, that, that small landscape area that I described between essentially the building and West Street will also be enhanced, as explained by Ben, and will become a fenced-in landscaped area. Parking will, as I noted, continues on the, on the right-hand side and on the left-hand side. And then we reach that main entry again, but, but we're proposing a port de chaise that we can explain in the architectural presentation. Essentially, it's an enhanced entry. Continuing further into the site, and on the left-hand side, there's another landscaped outdoor amenity area that will, that it also enhances an existing landscaped area. Further in, you'll see the service area, which was the location of the old garage entry. And that's, as, as will be explained in the architectural presentation, that's the location of the kitchen. It'll be the service area that will service screened in dumpsters and a recycle area as well as loading. And, and as we continue further in, there's another landscape park area. Before we get to that cul-de-sac at the end, the cul-de-sac is being improved and widened slightly to allow for easy turning of the fire vehicles, emergency vehicles through the site. We had worked the details of that out with Chief Condon earlier, early in the process. And it also allows for delivery vehicles to access and egress the site. And then in the elbow of the building, the corner of the building is new entry or exit, I should say, from the garage. It's a one-way exit, essentially directly out into the cul-de-sac. I count continuing through to the southerly area. That area essentially remains as is, but will, will receive enhanced landscaping. Then to the south of the building and to the area along Highland Avenue, as will be explained in the architectural presentation, there are patios being proposed. And the purpose is to, is to provide outside space for each of the new units that are in the lower level of the building, but also to, to enhance the street connectivity to the, to the site. So that's an overview of the, of the site layout. As I noted, some of you have probably heard this before because the plan has not really changed since you saw it last. It's just been refined somewhat. Just quickly to check some of the other boxes. With regards to storm drainage and other utilities, this is a developed site. All of the storm drain systems, sewer, water, and other utilities are available on, on site. We've worked closely with the Department of Public Works to confirm that there are no capacity issues or other issues that might inhibit the development of the building the way we're proposing it here. You have a letter from the DPW. It only has three comments. They're all essentially standard. And we, we expect to comply with, with those three comments. Finally, if we could just flip to the next slide, I'll just quickly go over lighting. There's a lot of colors and numbers and information on this plan. And it suffices to say that if you were to study this plan, you would see that, that firstly, all of the lighting has been based on the site with a modern, new lighting system that's energy efficient has, has downward facing fixtures that will ensure that lights from the site will just provide safety lighting for the occupants and visitors to the site while not spilling light off of the property in any direction. And if we could just flip through the next few slides pretty quickly, it'll show you the types of fixtures that are being proposed. You can see there's a sort of a modern, traditional looking fixture that you're, you're going to see throughout the site. There's one on this plan. These are just light, lights that would be next to a door, sort of decorative purpose lights. And, and again, through, through the, through the rest of these slides. But you can see that they're all sort of modern downward facing LED, economic and environmentally friendly fixtures that will provide the lighting we need without causing a nuisance offsite. Thank, thank you, Michelle. Madam Chair, that's the end of my presentation. I'll stand by for any questions that you might have now or at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I appreciate it. And before Ben LaFrance talks about landscape, landscaping, I just want to remind the board that before we filed with, with you, we met with the design review board to go over all the exterior components of the building and the site, including lighting. And they issued their approval, I think it was February 21st or 22nd. And that's, you, you have that in your, in your records. So they're, they were happy with, with our design. So then I guess, Ben, can you talk about landscaping?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Once again, Ben LaFrance with Hawk Design here to present to you the landscape plans that we have for Carter Mill. You know, as David Kelly said, it's, it's a tired landscape. I, I would tend to agree with that. A lot of the understory plantings are some 20 years plus old. So, you know, they've been in the ground for a long time and, and were unkempt, unmaintained over the last few years. So by and large, we intend to remove a lot of those understory plantings throughout the property. There are some existing shade trees, mature shade trees and flowering trees that we do intend to retain on the property, and I'll, I'll point those out as well in my presentation. But I think we're all familiar with this building and, and for many years, it's really not embraced its most important facade, Highland Avenue. And together with LCB, the applicant, the design team, it really aims to change that by activating that building facade with new architectural features and plantings, as well as the, the individual unit terraces that Mr. Kelly spoke about a moment ago. We've, we've created an appropriate landscape setting for the building, its residents and in the neighborhood, accomplished through a palette of plant materials that, that will create year-round interest through evergreen and deciduous materials, bloom colors and tides. materials, bloom colors and timing, plant textures, and in a range of of sizes, both when the plants go in and and when they eventually mature. All the plants that we specified for the property are non-invasive species. We have many species that are native or cultivars thereof, native species specifically selected for this this environment and are tolerant of drought conditions. So to walk you through the the plan a little bit here, as as David presented, the south, I'll begin at the south of the building. Then we'll work along Highland Avenue towards west and then down the the west side of the building here. So for the south parking area, most of the trees and shrubs in the parking area, we're going to retain. We're not changing much of that parking area. There's some nice mature plantings there. So we don't intend to change much in terms of the internal parking area there. However, along the western edge, along the rail line, we we want to supplement an existing fence there with some pyramidal evergreens to really soften that view of the fence there, help give just a little bit more buffer to the rail lines. Along the building facade here, we're removing all of the existing vegetation that's overgrown. We're replanting with a mix of deciduous and evergreen shrubs as well as ornamental grasses that will really soften that ground plane and create visual interest. And then we're also adding the private unit patios that David explained. You could see that there's five of them along that southern facade of the building that will really help to activate that parking area a little bit, activate the walkway along the parking. And then we're also adding some windows in the in the building there that the architectural team will review with you here in a few minutes. Moving along to the Highland Avenue facade of the building, we think that you'll really see quite a transformation here in in terms of both the landscape and architectural features. From a landscape perspective, we've we've proposed columnar boholl red maples and columnar sargent cherries along the building, much much more columnar trees that that you know, they'll their growth habit will be very tight as opposed to what exists today, very broad spreading trees that are constantly having to be maintained. And that will really complement the building while softening the massing of the facade of the building. Along the southern end, we are continuing the the unit terraces where we can along there. As you can see, the cursor there, there are several on the southern end of the building. We think that that will also enhance the streetscape along there and activate that sidewalk. On the ground plane, we're using many varieties of plant species with interesting textures, blooms and heights, including species such as summer sweet, vibranum, inkberry, hydrangea, boxwood amongst many others. And and also Roy just had mentioned that, you know, we worked quite extensively with Mr. Hammer on the design review board. He was quite pleased with with our species selections and, you know, we made a couple of fine tuning things, but we're really glad to hear that he was he was excited about the plan as well. So moving towards the north end of the building along West Street, we're retaining the current brick terrace there just north of the building. That's in a little recessed courtyard. Today, there's a retaining wall around it. We're going to be keeping the retaining wall and that terrace, replacing all the plantings with a fresh pallet. We've added some nice planting to the intersection there. We think that will be a nice backdrop to the West Street and Highland Avenue intersection, while also creating a bit of a buffer from from the street to to that courtyard. On the western side of of that courtyard there along West Street, we're adding a memory care courtyard that will be contained within an eight-foot-high privacy fence. You can see we have a small concrete terrace there, a loop walkway. There's a shade structure in there, and then, of course, many plantings to create the visual interest in there. Along the West Street facade of that fence, we've added some emerald green arborvitae to soften the view of the fence, soften the height of the fence. We think that will be a nice key feature there to help soften that facade there. Moving down the west side of the building, this this is really our our primary parking area and entries to both the memory care and the independent living portions of the building. You could see that we've got two key drop-off areas. The memory care being the northern one with a port cochere over the drop-off. We've enhanced the paving there with with concrete pavers as well as the the paving at the drop-off to the to the southern end there, southern entrance right there with, again, concrete pavers really designating that area. You can also see we've meandered a walkway that will interconnect many of the key features along this facade so that you walk through landscape space instead of walking along parked vehicles. And along the way, we've created little expansions of those areas for benches, a nice place to sit and read a book or chat with a friend. By relocating four of the existing parking spaces along the way there, we've been able to expand the existing resident gazebo area. There's there's an existing gazebo just south of the the memory care entrance, right about there, that we're we're taking advantage relocating four of the parking spaces to a more north area. That really allowed us to expand that amenity space for our residents, creating, you know, an active and a passive recreation area that will contain, we've got a grill area in there, a nice small water feature, fire pit, bocce courts, and a nice lawn area as well. To the to the west of this parking area here, there is an existing mixed evergreen and deciduous tree line that we will be retaining there to the far north end of that up at West Street. And the southern end of that, closer to the entrance to our parking garage, we're enhancing that with, again, some some columnar evergreens in there because there are not not many plantings in there. So so we just want to supplement that up against the rail fence. So in conclusion, we really believe that we've enhanced the landscape features. We've really opened the building up to Highland Avenue, and I think combined with the architectural features, it's it's really going to transform this building and and property. So with that, I'll turn it back to Roy and I believe the architectural team.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate it. Michelle Hobbs from the architectural team will now walk you through the proposed changes in in the building.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
I want to make sure that the board members are satisfied that we go on with the various parts of the presentation rather than stopping after the, you know, the site plan and the landscaping. A board member satisfied to have the the presentation go on, or do you wish to have it stopped to ask questions at this point?
I have no questions at this point, Madam Chair.
Same here. I have I I have some, but I'll hold until the end.
All right, then. Fine. Then please go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you. Michelle?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Hobbs. I'm with the architectural team. So Roy, David and Ben have already done a fantastic job presenting, you know, where we're at, but using this kind of aerial view, essentially, you know, this is billion's been here since the fifties. Ninety-four, it's a pretty extensive renovation that actually covered quite a bit along the ground floor from an opening standpoint. There's multiple kind of existing openings at the pedestrian level that were covered. Our proposal is essentially the square footage footprint remains the exact same. There's an addition of the fourth floor, as Roy was discussing, which is set back along Highland Ave, as well as the residential section to the south, while kind of staying, you know, tight to the building along the train track side. So I'm just going to kind of walk you all through some of the plans and the elevations and then move through some proposed views as well. So as everyone's kind of already discussed, the formal entry is off of West Street. So your main entries are actually from your parking area. The vehicular path and circulation through the site is going to remain the same. And as Roy pointed out, the difference with the parking area. So currently, this entire L section is all parking, and we're taking part of that over for interior space and actually reintroducing a new exit for the garage here. And I'll point out in the elevations what we're actually doing with the existing garage openings to allow for really trying to bring natural light into this building. So on the ground floor, you can kind of see the delineation of the two communities, more or less. So to Plan Right, we have our memory care and assisted living, which has already been mentioned, is the entry is defined by this portico share. It's existing, but we are giving it a slight facelift, I would say. And then Plan Left is the independent living side that deals with the portico entry that Ben already did a great job kind of defining, you know, how these two elements are have been defined as these entries. And then in the center is that loading area, so really kind of tucked behind, you know, away from the main pedestrian path and vehicular path, this kind of serves as our main core through the building, which you'll see in some of the other plans. A couple of other things to note, the site utilities, such as trash transformers, the generator, all of those are going to be remaining in their existing conditions. So really, the work on the site plan is the landscaping, as it's been described, and then these independent living patios along the south and then east facade that I will touch on in the elevations. Again, just to kind of walk you through these plans very quickly. This is the second floor, you know, that kind of center of the building is our loading. That's really what translates all the way up. And then here's the third floor. A lot of what we're achieving with this design is really bringing in natural light. It's a very deep building. So on the first floor, back up really quickly, we're reintroducing windows along the entire facade at Highland, as well as to the south and then on the interior. So as I mentioned, these were all covered over in the ninety-four renovation. So we're reopening those. We're putting new windows in, really trying to liven up the facade. And then at the fourth floor, you know, the location Roy discussed, the massing and mechanical systems were designed extremely intentionally based on view corridors and really minimizing any visual impact from Highland Ave, as well as the residential corridor to the left, your plan left. The goal with this was really, you know, those conscious kind of sightlines of neighbors while also creating a very unique experience for the residents. So you'll notice, you know, we've dealt with this as kind of two entities. There's a bar Plan Left, and then a kind of smaller building on the right. So the bar is the independent living units, and we actually have introduced terraces that have a kind of planter edge, which will essentially act as a kind of filtration of light and views. And we've really focused these terraces inward to create a sense of community along, you know, in a sense of almost like a pocket patio, if you think of it in that way. So the the goal is really creating these kind of garden areas, both private and then shared. And then on Plan Right, this is part of the assisted living program. So this is actually the amenity space for the assisted living. You can kind of see, you know, it's a little cafe, bistro area, and then there's an outdoor terrace as well. The key with this is, you know, there's planter edges along all of these that will, you know, may define the space, not allow for any individuals to kind of roam beyond that, while also allowing really this kind of nice filtering of light, this reintroduction of some vegetation on the roof as well. We're also looking at adding skylights here, which is really was adding in that natural light from below. So then if we can dive into the elevations, I think this is really where you can see the impact this project will have on this building. So, you know, the top of all, I'm going to show all four elevations and, you know, in the sake of time, I'm not going to talk about every element on each one, but the existing elevation is kind of shown at the top, and you can really see how multitude of openings were closed off. And what we're really doing, and you can see it in these enlarged, we're opening these back up, reintroducing windows. These are those patio entries that have been talked about, which I have a section through as well to further illustrate. But we're really focusing on livening this Highland Ave facade, you know, having that kind of pedestrian connection, wanting this building to kind of have some life breathed into it. And then the fourth floor is, you know, we looked at this as, you know, how could it be complimentary while understanding that it's a newer construction? So I'll also kind of dive in a little bit into our materials board, but it's, you know, a fiber cement panel. We're really trying to work with the existing lines that the EPIS offers us on the kind of ground level, as well as the kind of traditional, you know, stacking of the brick. So really breaking down some of those proportions and translating it appropriately to this kind of new material and newer construction type. So this is the Highland Ave elevation. We're just going to move through these. So this is the West Street elevation. Again, you can see, you know, kind of removing some of the old ornamentation that's there. There's some really nice-looking awnings, maintaining the garage entries that are already existing, and then you can see how the fourth floor kind of works with the building below. And then as we move kind of into the interior of the building, again, you have those two defining moments of entry. So to the left, this is the existing portico, which essentially was just kind of getting cleaned up and getting a facelift with a new vestibule. And then as we kind of move along this facade, you can see we're actually we're capturing some of the existing openings. This was the old garage exit. And we're actually going to be filling those in with, you know, larger windows to allow to kind of really bring light inside into the residence and the use. And then to the south, or south, to the bottom of the page, you can see the portico for the independent living entry, again, getting a nice facelift. And then to the right of that is the new exit that David talked about from the garage standpoint. This is the elevation from the south, so this is from the residential area. I think again, this gives a great representation of really how this building is going to be coming alive. So the existing elevation, the entire pedestrian level is covered. It's very kind of cold and dark. And what we're going to be doing is reintroducing those windows that the openings are there, having these patios, really trying to activate this area with the plantings and then the various architectural elements, the patios. And then you can also see the kind of layering, right? So we have the the independent living on the fourth floor as well with their own outdoor space, their own patios that really start to activate not only the first floor, but also this upper level. So I have a couple of elevation perspectives to walk through. So gives you a good sense, I think, what everyone has already painted the picture of. This is the existing northwest view from Highland Ave. We have extensive overgrown vegetation. And then here's our proposal. So this is dealing with those patio entries all along both facades. And you can actually see that based on, you know, really the attentiveness we've put into where this massing will sit, it sits quite far back. So at the pedestrian level, it's very, it's not as visual as you would think by looking at the elevations. This is the southwest view from Highland Ave. Again, this gives you a sense of how that kind of stepping back along Highland, but also how we'll kind of be cleaning up a lot of these view quarters from a vegetation standpoint. This is the north view from the south parking lot, so this is the residential. So you'll see, you know, here's those patios. Again, there's some screening involved based on that stepping back. So while we are integrating introducing terraces on that fourth floor, because we're kind of pushed so far from the south, it's actually, the building is acting as a screen. This is the existing south view from West Street, so this is the existing entry. And the new entry, as Ben was discussing, really, you know, livening it up with some vegetation, really actually welcoming individuals into the site. And it gives you a great sense of how that kind of entry works. This is within the parking lot, so this is that independent living entry with the portico. This is some of the kind of rework of that. Again, you know, you can see that entry coming out from the parking area, the fourth floor, kind of working with the existing elements, and then the facelift happening at the portico. And these are just some views on the roof. Now, these are not views that anyone this would be a maintenance worker standing on the corner of the roof, but just to give you a sense of how this massing is coming together. Even the mechanical screen was thought of as part of the design, so it does not feel, you know, like an afterthought. Every element was designed as part of this massing to really fall within all of those setbacks we defined. I'm going to have a few more slides. So this is a section through Highland Ave at one of those independent living patios. There's about a, Ben and David correct me wrong, but it's about two and a half feet grave change from one end of the building to the other from Highland Ave. So what we're actually doing is we're creating a kind of small retaining area. Then with a railing and actually creating this very similar to what you would see kind of in the south end of Boston's kind of garden level, you know, pocket aspect. So allowing there to be this connection from a pedestrian level while still having this protection from the street and, you know, having this kind of private zone. And here's our material board. So at these patios, we're dealing with, you know, the EPIS is a unique, it's a unique material. So when we kind of provide these interventions of these patio doors, we're going to be proposing a fiber cement panel kind of infill wall that more or less works with the EPIS color. And then as you move up to the fourth floor, we're looking at doing a kind of light mist, very, you know, light and white with some wood accents to really complement the kind of rich tones of the brick of the existing building. And then I believe I am handing it over to Erin for this.
I said one, Jean, would you? We're ready to go to Erin for that, our traffic engineer, unless you'd like to ask any questions on the architectural presentation.
Do members want to ask questions having to do with the, you know, the design of the building, the site, landscaping, any questions like that at this time?
No.
All right, seems like people, oh, Paul Albert.
One, one thing that came to mind. Michelle, during your presentation. Is there the ability for solar panels and for other ways to make, make the building energy efficient and carbon footprint lowered? Type, type thing, this is an old building, but you're renovating it. And it looks like there's plenty of room on the roof. I'm just wondering whether this is something that the developers have considered.
Yeah, I mean, we're still kind of in development, you know, looking at some of the kind of further sustainable options. I think I could turn it over to Lee if you wanted to discuss a little bit more about those options, but it is something, you know, we've kind of been working with LCB on what options are available to us.
Okay.
So I know up to now, we're evaluating windows for, you know, to increase the efficiency of the performance of the building in that regard. We will be putting in car charging stations in the parking lot. We really haven't looked at solar to date. I know we've checked it out at some other buildings of ours and it hasn't been feasible so far. I can't close that door, but I know we're not looking at solar today other than more of a global basis. But we are evaluated, since it is a gut rehab, we are evaluating all the components for energy efficiency as we move forward.
Great, thank you. I'm all set.
All right, any, any other questions at this, at this time on what's been presented thus far?
I have some questions, but I can wait until we get through.
Until we get through the traffic too. Okay, let's move on to traffic then. I've got a few questions myself, but I'm content to wait.
Okay, Erin Fredt from McMahon Associates is our traffic engineer.
Thank you, Roy. So we have completed a full traffic impact study, which we had previously completed and then revised based on input that we actually received from this board. And the full impact study that we revised in February of this year included analysis during the weekday morning and weekday afternoon peak hours at the signalized intersection of Highland Avenue with West Street as well as the existing intersection of West Street with Hillside Avenue, as well as the existing project site driveways. We based our analysis on traffic volume data collected in 2019. We did do some additional counts in 2021, but because we had those counts from before COVID, we were able to adjust things accordingly to reflect a more typical year. We conducted crash analysis at all of the existing study area intersections, which included the time when the existing site was actually occupied by the previous land use. And based on that review, there were some ident, some safety issues that have been identified. And, and as part of our review, we've also reviewed some improvements that have been spearheaded by the town and are currently in some, some some progress, which I'll touch base on a little later. As part of our analysis of the site, we also looked at trip generation and trip distribution associated with the proposed project site. We also did a comparison to the previous land use. And then once we looked at all the existing conditions, the future conditions, both without and with the project, we conduct capacity analysis to understand how the proposed project might impact traffic operations within the study area. And for this particular project, we also conducted parking analysis to understand how the parking demand for the proposed project relates to the number of proposed parking spaces. Next slide, please. So as part of our existing conditions review, I really wanted to highlight the location of this particular project. You know, we're very close to the center at the Heights. The need of commuter rail stop is, is right across the street. And there's another, a number of other retail and service, services nearby that can be utilized not only by the residents, but those who are visiting the facility and employees of the facility. There's also a great pedestrian network specifically on Highland Avenue with sidewalks as well as a connection to the signalized intersection where there is the opportunity for people to cross and access those amenities through a signalized crossing. And the reason I think this is worth mentioning is that the presence of the project site in such close proximity to all of these things really can have an impact on the number of trips and even the number of parking spaces that might be associated with the proposed project. People who might have gone to visit someone and then gone for a drive to go get lunch might now instead just walk across the street to do so. And so that really could bring down the number of vehicle trips coming to and from the project site even further from the previous land use, which I'll touch base on in a minute, which had a significant number of additional trips compared to what is being proposed as part of the LCB project. And so our analysis in, in the full traffic impact study that we did didn't take any credit for the saved parking spaces or potential reduction in trips from employees taking the commuter rail or, or walking to and from these nearby places. And so the analysis we conducted is, is what we would consider to be conservative because we didn't take any kind of reduction for these types of amenities. Next slide, please. When we started to look at the future conditions, we, in coordination with the town, identified some ongoing projects nearby the site. The first of which is the identification of potential improvements at the intersection of West Street and Hillside Avenue. Those improvements have been identified through the Mass Stop Complete Street Funding Program, which the town does in coordination with Mass Stop. And the, the focus of those improvements really are for pedestrian amenities, looking at new curb ramps, looking at new crosswalks, median refuge islands, enhanced signage and lighting for the intersection. And then there are also some potential signage suggestions for solar glare and things like that to help improve pedestrian connectivity and safety at the intersection. And so based on our review, it's my understanding that that project will be funded through the Complete Street Funding Program in 2022. The other project that the town is currently undergoing is an improvement project at the intersection of Highland Avenue and West Street. That project includes two separate or two, two items as part of it. The first are improvements to drainage infrastructure, which are intended to help address some of the existing drainage issues and pooling that I understand to occur at the Trader Joe's and in that general vicinity of the intersection. And the other part of the improvements are actually traffic and signal improvements. So looking at revising lane configurations, revise signal timings, things of that nature. And so to the extent that we, of the information that we know at this time, we included that in our future analysis in the traffic impact study. Next slide, please.
I just interrupt for one second. Sure, everyone understands with Hillside and West with that program, the town, thank you, the, the town made a grant proposal request to Mass Department of Transportation. And that was approved. So the, the, the work that is to be done at Weston Hillside in fiscal year 22 is with state money, not town money. I just want to ensure that people know, okay.
As we looked at the trip generation associated with the proposed project, we felt it important to look at not just what's being compared over the vacant building, but what the comparison is to the number of trips associated with the previous land use. And as you can see in the bar charts, the proposed LCB project is estimated to result in a significantly lower number of peak hour trips during weekday morning and weekday afternoon peak hours. But also over the course of the entire day, nursing facilities, medical offices, those tend to generate quite a few more trips than specifically assisted living, but also independent living. And so while our analysis is a review of, or a comparison between the vacant site and the proposed project, the previous land uses really were much more intense uses and would have resulted in much higher of vehicle trips accessing the project site. Next slide, please. We also conducted a review of parking, specifically the anticipated parking demand associated with both the assisted living as well as the independent living components of the project. As mentioned previously, the project will include 149 total onsite parking spaces. And based on our review utilizing the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking generation, we identified a peak period parking demand during the week of approximately 81 parking spaces. And so the proposed number of parking spaces onsite is expected to well exceed the demand for the proposed project. Next slide, please. So in, in a, in brief summary, and of course, happy to answer any questions that come up. But the project itself with the assisted living and independent living components is a relatively low traffic generator. And so the number of vehicles entering and exiting the site is not expected to be very high. And in fact, is, is estimated to be lower than what was there previously. We do recognize that there are some existing traffic issues along West Street, but there are currently two separate town, town run and town endorsed projects that are already underway and, and in the process of either being designed or funded. And that our analysis really did indicate that the, the change in project trips is not shown to result in a significant change in level of service or delay or queuing. There, at the signalized intersection of Highland, Highland Avenue and West Street, we see no change in level of service for any of the movements at that intersection. And at the intersection of West Street and Hillside, we see a very minimal change in the amount of delay. But again, that is related to the comparison of the proposed project to the vacant site. And the proposed project site driveways are shown to operate at level of service C or better, which is, is considered to be more than acceptable in this kind of developed area. And so I think with that, I'll turn it back over to Roy and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Erin. Well, that, that concludes our formal presentation. And if anyone has any questions, please ask away.
All right, let me give planning board members the opportunity to make comments and ask questions. And then we'll turn to any persons who are attending. Let's see, I, I see nearest to me on the block system, Adam Block. So Adam, would you like to have any questions or any comments?
Sure. I think we spoke about this a little bit before when you originally presented. And we discussed the zoning articles. I think this is an enhanced use of an existing building. Perhaps some modernized uses. And I see that the, as a result of the change in use and the reduction in capacity effectively, because I think there were over 200 form of other beds or residential units plus, plus the medical office space, that this does become a reduction in the traffic generation. I did have some questions. In terms of the, you made a comment that there's no change in the level of service at the intersection between Highland and West. And I was curious, what's that in comparison to? Is that is that based on traffic counts from 2019 or is that based on previous use?
That was based on counts from 2019. So the counts that we did doesn't include trips associated with the previous land use.
Okay. And, and those, those counts that were conducted in 2019, were they conducted in December?
That is correct. They're conducted in December, but then we look at seasonal data throughout the year from Mass DOT that helps us further adjust volumes if necessary because we do recognize that at certain times of year, traffic volumes can be higher or lower. And so we do review that seasonal data to make adjustments to our traffic volumes to reflect a typical period.
And how did you adjust for this period?
Let me double check that. So for this particular set of data, we adjusted our December 2019 volumes upward by 4% to represent an average month.
Okay. And do you have any anticipation in terms of the distribution of traffic? How many trips generated would be coming to or from Highland and accessing 128 from there? And also trip general trip distribution from Highland, rather from West going towards Kendrick and accessing 128 off of that intersection?
Sure, so when we looked at our trip distribution, we, we, we really looked at the existing distribution, I'm sorry, the existing travel patterns within the study area. And so based on that, we estimate about 35% would be coming to and from Highland Avenue to the north to access 128. And then we estimated about 15% coming to and from West Street towards, you know, towards the Kendrick side.
And is that, is that employees or is, are that, is that residents? Is that medical staff?
And because we looked at existing travel patterns based on the, the original count, it really is representative of employees, visitors as well as residents. And so there are a number of different ways that you can look at trip distribution, including using census data and things like that. But in the end, we, we decided to look at the actual counted travel patterns in order to distribute that traffic. And really, in this case, the number of trips is so low that once you get into, you know, you have two site driveways and then some people turn right, some people turn left. So we're really talking about like less than five vehicles at any one movement within the whole study area. So, you know, we can, there certainly could be tweaks or adjustments made. Oh, five more percent from here or 10% there. But because the number of trips associated with the project is so low, I, I wouldn't anticipate that it makes any kind of substantial change to the findings of our study.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, you said that you, uh, also conducted some counts in 2021. What sites were those counted at?
So we conducted, um, counts in, in 2021 at the intersection of West Street and Hillside Avenue. Because the intersections are so close to each other and we already have the 2019 data at Highland Avenue and West Street, um, we were able to adjust those volumes from 2021 upward again to reflect that 2019 pre-COVID seasonally adjusted average volume.
And actually, uh, was a number of questions that I was gonna ask, uh, following, so I appreciate that. I, uh, I have some additional questions, but not specifically, uh, relating to, um, to tra- uh, to tra- uh, traffic. Uh, one question that I had, and I guess Roy, this is open to the field and who wants to answer these. I, I noticed, and I tend to be a bit of a pit master, so I have a personal interest in this, that there's a grill space that I noticed. Is that grill space to be used for the memory care residents? Or is that for the independent? Is it combined use?
Uh, no, that, this is Ted Doyle from LCB. Um, that would be for the, uh, assisted living residents primarily in, in independent. Anything having to do with, um, memory care, obviously for a safety standpoint, wouldn't involve open flames like that, things like that, things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you. Um, what level, uh, uh, lead is this, is proposed here? We talked a little bit about, uh, energy efficiency and sustainability. Are you at a silver level?
Um, usually we start with being able to certify. We usually don't certify, but we make sure we can certify. And I think most of our buildings end up at silver.
Okay. Very good. Um, I had some questions about drainage, uh, with the addition of, um, with the addition of the fourth floor. What additional, uh, water sewer impacts are there? And, uh, and is there enough capacity in the system as a result of the, I mean, we're only talking about, I think, 10 or 11 units on the fourth floor. It's not a high, it's not like there's 100 units on the top, on the fourth floor. And yet I'm just curious if, uh, if that was studied, what the impact would be on those resources.
I think, uh, David Kelly, I can respond to that. But I just, you know, from a layman's point of view, right now, there's a roof. And, uh, we're not increasing, you know, so the fourth floor just has a percentage of that. So the, you have the same square footage that's capturing some water. So you're not having an increase in, in gallonage that's falling on the building.
Not of that part, I understand. I guess what I'm referring to is between water, water and sewer use.
Yeah.
Go up as a result of, you know, apartments and, you know, dishwashers, washing machine kind of thing.
That, that David can.
Yeah, I can comment on that. So, Mr. Block, so the, the cap firstly, we've reviewed the project in its entirety with DPW as evidenced by their letter. But secondly, and specifically, the calculation for water and sewers is a function of the number of bedrooms in the facility. And in fact, um, a nursing facility generates more flow than an average, um, assisted living unit, for instance. So, um, flow to sewer and use of water is actually reduced by about 30% in this project, um, as a result of the project.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Um, Mr. Jacobs, uh, do you have questions at this time?
I have a couple. Can we go to, um, slide 34? Okay. So, um, as I've sort of signaled in a prior hearing with this project, one of my concerns, and by the way, I, I like the project. I'm, I'm very much in favor of this project. But one of my concerns is that there is likely to be increased pedestrian traffic, not vehicula, vehicular traffic, but pedestrian traffic across West to get from the site to the senior center. It's one of the great advantages of this project on this site is that the senior center is so close. But there is going to be increased pedestrian traffic. And now, in this slide, you mentioned that there is gonna, there are gonna be some pedestrian improvements at Weston Hillside. And that's gonna be town planned, state funded. So my question is two parts. One is, can you tell us as, as, in as much detail as possible, what you understand those improvements to be? And secondly, whether you think that whatever is planned there is gonna be enough to keep things safe?
Sure. So regarding the first part of your question, um, the improvements, um, that were identified were outlined in the NASTA Complete Street Funding Program Prioritization Plan, which is something that was pulled together by the town, um, which lays out the location, the priority of a specific improvement, how much funding they're requesting from the DOT and what they anticipate those improvements to include. And so for the West Street at Hillside Avenue, the improvements were identified as the removal of the brick inlay located west of the intersection. I think y'all, it's, um, it's just kind of, it almost looks like a crosswalk, but there's no ramps on either side. So they proposed to remove that. Um, they proposed to provide pedestrian refuge islands on West Street. So instead of having to cross the entirety of West Street, uh, the, these would include, um, I would, they, they should be about six feet in width in order to be a safe accommodation for a pedestrian to wait. Um, but essentially would break the crossing up into two smaller crossings. They also suggested the construction of new high visibility crosswalks across West Street, um, in order to help the, the visibility of the crosswalk. And so those do not exist today. There are no pedestrian markings with the exception of that brick inlay west of the intersection. There are no crosswalk markings at the intersection today. And so those would be brand new. They also suggested the installation of, um, warning light systems or flashing beacons such as, um, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which typically are the yellow pedestrian warning sign with lights underneath that flash alternately when activated. They, they also suggested installing some signage for warning of, uh, solar glare, obviously, um, coming up the hill. And then the construction of new ADA compliant ramps for all of the crosswalks at the intersection. Um, so those are, those are all the improvements that were identified as part of the Complete Street Funding Program. In terms of their safety, you know, I think they certainly are targeted at improving pedestrian safety, which, you know, to your point, um, the people are wanting to go to the center at the heights. That could be one way that they would go. And with these improvements in place, pedestrians would certainly be, um, much more visible to traffic with the pedestrian refuge islands that, that would narrow the roadway, at least visually, if not also physically, which, um, would be expected to at least slow vehicles down a little bit. Um, that kind of narrowed experience for vehicles tends to slow vehicles down. And so it, it certainly would be an, a, a significant improvement from a pedestrian perspective as well as a safety perspective. So does that answer your question?
Well, I, I guess it, it answers the first part. Um, what about the second part? Is it enough?
Is it enough? Um, I mean, it's, it's enough for, from a pedestrian perspective, you know, it really is a focus on pedestrian safety. Um, and, you know, uh, whoever the consultant or design team is that would ultimately design that on behalf of the town would review all of those components in order to ensure safe access for pedestrians. You know, I think any safety improvement is, is worthwhile. And, you know, I think.
Aaron, Aaron?
Yeah.
Drop real quickly. If you were designing this for me, is there anything you'd add to the pedestrian improvements?
Um, no.
Question. That's what, that's where I should have said it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't need to interrupt, but.
That's okay.
And I was waiting for Marty to, to ask that next.
Right.
Um, I, I don't, I don't think so. And you know, this, this is a complicated location, um, due to the proximity of the railroad tracks. And so it's not like you can put a signal in there or always stop sign, you know, without having other significant, um, potential impacts. And so I think the pedestrian improvements are, do encompass what you would propose for safety improvements at this intersection.
Thank you.
Okay. Second, my second basic question. Just a clarification. I don't know. Go back a slide, would you please, to 33? I think 33. Uh, no, that's not the one. Um, all right, well, I think you said that you were looking at traffic counts from December 2019. Volumes from 2019. So why did you choose those volumes? I, I, and he is the question, here's the reason behind the question, which is this building was closed and empty in 2019.
Oh, sure. So.
We didn't have the benefit of knowing we were doing this when the building was occupied. And typically when we start doing our diligence on a project, one of the things we get right to is traffic. And that's just basically how the dates worked out.
I mean, is there, but is, is there anything available prior to 2019 that might be helpful?
Are there MBTA or Mass DOT?
I know Aaron spoke to the town about what data was available, so I'll turn it back over to Aaron.
Okay.
I mean, I, there likely is some data available, um, from, um, from the 128 Adeline. I know there was a focus on this area. But that data is likely going to be, I won't say it's too old, but you know, I think more will have changed in the area, including all of the changes at 128. That even though the, the 2019 data doesn't have this site trips associated with it included, the older data wouldn't have a number of other changes. And so I would still say that the 2019 data is more representative, um, than some older data, even though that older data might have the site trips. Based on my understanding of the available, historically available data in this area, specifically the project site driveways, uh, were not, were not available. And so we could, we could make estimates like we've done to know, to estimate what kind of project trips were coming to and from the site. But to my knowledge, there are not specific turning movement counts at the existing site driveways.
But Aaron, just so I understand, uh, since we know what the use, what the prior uses were, you have ITE data for those uses. So you can come up with, uh, an estimate anyway of what the, the building would have been producing when it was still fully operational?
Right. And that's what we outlined in our study. And that's what those bar charts, um, really were reflecting, were the, the previous land use with the more intense nursing and medical office, at least as it relates to vehicle trips, compared to the assisted living and independent living components proposed as part.
No, no, I understand that part. Okay. I get it. All right. Well, thank you very much for your answer. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right. Then Paul Alpert.
Um, sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue on Marty's thoughts about pedestrian traffic. I know Marty was focusing in on the potential use of the senior center by the residents. I'm more of a foodie and like to sit outside in nice weather. And, and if I were living here, I'd be crossing West Street to go to Cafe Fresh or to Trader Joe's or, or the pizza place and pick something up and then cross West Street again to sit in Avery Square and watch the world go by while I enjoyed my, my sandwich or my bagel. You mentioned that, that, that there's, um, traffic improvements being contemplated or planned actually for Highland Avenue and West Street. And that's a very busy intersection. You know, I've been at that intersection. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic at that intersection, which can be difficult because there's a lot of turning traffic on all four sides there. Do you know, or can you describe how these traffic improvements are going to be able to improve the pedestrian traffic, uh, at that intersection?
So I can't specifically say. Um, in talking to, um, town staff, um, we were provided with a kind of draft plan that really only look, has looked at, um, lane configuration changes so far. Um, we, I, we did talk to, this was very early on in the process, but we did talk about the proposed LCB project and that kind of, um, raised something, uh, for town staff, kind of thinking about, uh, looking at pedestrian clearance intervals for the intersection, making sure that, you know, a population that may be skewing older because of who's living nearby has sufficient time to be crossing those signalized crossings. And so that is, I know that was something that was raised and it is likely still in the mind of town staff. But as far as I'm aware, the specifics of timing, um, have not been hashed out or designed yet.
David Kelly, did you get any additional information from Tom when you spoke to him a week or two ago? I know the project's funding is in line and they were just behind on design and starting drainage shortly.
And then. Yeah, that's right. In fact, they were pushing, I, I don't actually leave, but just for the board, they, they broke the project as Aaron had said earlier into two components, the storm drainage component, which was an immediate issue for them, um, which they're currently out to bid on. Um, and the second one is following. So I've not seen the plan here and it seemed more than I did. Sorry, the, I don't.
Thought I'd ask.
But I do want to say that for pedestrian access for the residents here, this is a great location.
No question.
Okay. All right. Um, I have a, a couple of questions myself, uh, so I'll ask them now. Uh, then I want to, I make sure I, uh, note the comments that have come into us from our town, uh, boards and departments. And, uh, and then, um, I mean, and then, um, turn to the public. When I, when the lights were presented, um, I think it was David Kelly who put them, the, uh, them up. I was looking for lights that it seemed to me would be the parking area lights. And I didn't see them. I just want to make sure that the parking area lights are going to be downcast and not, uh, casting on other properties and so forth.
Yeah, I think they were on the first sheet of the lighting machine.
Yeah. What, what were they like?
Uh, i- it's a pole light.
Oh, that, that's, oh, okay. It's this kind of, um, curved thing that, that, that casts the light down.
That is correct. It'd be those and bollards in the pedestrian area on the, uh, closer to the building, uh, that.
Always close to the ground to guide people stack. Okay. Okay. Good. I, I missed that first one. All right.
It's easy to miss.
And then on, um, I've, I've just been having a very hard time envisioning, um, the frontage along Highland Avenue. Um, the, the patios that you speak of are going to be below grade. And is that correct?
Yes.
Uh huh. Okay. So as one walks along Highland Avenue and looks toward the building, there'll be these below grade patios with the patio doors going out to them and possibly people sitting on their patio. Um, but it will be below grade. Okay. And then the trees, um, I know presently there are, the. I know presently there are, the trees are very large that are along Highland Avenue. But they're almost too large for the, for the planting bed. So the branches are cut off in the back, you know, as they rub against the building. You are very glad to hear you say that Nelson Hammer, who I, I just think is a wonderful landscape architect on our design review board is, is pleased with the trees. And I should just defer to him and not even ask anything. But, uh, what you said there are red maples and do they have a certain maximum growth? When you put them in, will there be small trees and then they eventually will grow and that sort of thing?
Sure. So there are Bohol red maples. We've used those towards the southern end of the building facade where we have a little bit more distance between the building and the sidewalk. And then as we.
Yes, that's right.
And then as we move more northerly towards West Street, we've used Columba Sergeant cherries. Those require a little less space. So both of those get, you know, I would say at maturity, they're about a ten to twelve foot spread at the most, and that's maturity, you know? So we're talking thirty years or so to get to that. They're all going in at a three to three and a half inch caliper specification. So they'd probably be, I'm gonna say around fifteen feet in height when they go in the ground.
Fifteen feet in height?
Fifteen to eighteen, depending on the grower.
Okay, that, that's a good height. All right. You've helped me to envision. I hadn't thought of the fact that there are differences between the southern end of the building and the northern end of the building. There's not as much space in the northern end. You need different trees.
Yeah, it's just a little bit closer to the sidewalk there at the north end.
And you've really designed them so that in the future, they won't outgrow their space.
That's exactly, exactly.
Perfect. Now, I don't know who will speak to this. Perhaps it will be Lee Bloom. But I know that our zoning for this overlay district has an affordable housing component. Well, twelve and a half percent of the independent living units must be designed to be affordable. And there are standards in the zoning for what that means. That, to me, that calculates to nine units.
That's.
And have you given thought to the expectation that, and I think it's in a different, a different section of our bylaw that I think is brought into this, that they should be, you know, in proportion to the bedroom sizes of the entire project. In other words,
Yep.
perhaps they would.
Out of that process.
Explain, explain what you're proposing.
Okay. Well, I don't have a plan here to show you, but I do know we've been with age Gulston and stores Louise actually is, is on this in this thing. They're working on the regulatory agreement and communicating with Kathy and with the state shortly. We've been having regular calls. In the meantime, Margaret Murphy, who also is on the call, we've engaged S E B Housing, the Anglers. They had just now come up with the draft affordable housing plan. And we went through and we, you know, again, proportionately, we have to match the makeup of the independent units. So if there's, you know, it's got to be twelve and a half percent of each type of unit and equitably dispersed throughout the building. So you don't know, you would never know whether it was an affordable or not. And we've already gone through, there's got to be a minimum seven hundred square feet for a one bedroom, nine hundred square feet for a two bedroom. Anything we offer within the rent for our market units, the affordable gets within their rent structure. So we have now taken our first shot. And what we think is equitable that the state will look at, Kathy will look at to make sure they're holding our feet to the fire, that they are equitable. And I think what we ended up doing was one on the ground floor, four on the second, four on the third.
You mentioned Kathy. Again, who is Kathy?
Karen.
Karen, I'm, I do that all the time and I apologize. Sorry, Margaret. Go ahead.
We've been talking to Karen Sonnenberg. Oh, Karen. Oh.
My mistake. I apologize.
I was thinking, did you talk to Karen Sonnenberg? All right.
We did. We talked to Karen.
Kathy, you meant Karen.
I, I apologize. That was my mistake.
Beautiful.
I mean, Gus, what, what is the status of the fair housing marketing plan? And can we get a copy of that now as part of the submittal so that we have it? At least in draft form to be referenced in the decision.
I, I don't think we want to have a draft document as part of the decision. We're, we're working on the affordability documents.
Right.
Everyone has to be satisfied.
Louise from Gulston, I'll just add that, you know, we're in the process of working on that regulatory agreement with Department of Housing and Community Development. We're going back and forth with them now. And as to your question, Jean, the, the comparable nature of the units is actually baked into the agreement itself. So the units have to be essentially indistinguishable from the market rate units. So they need to be comparable size, comparable finishes. So that's already sort of baked into the agreement. And the, the marketing plan that typically the other consultant prepares usually comes a lot later in time, a little bit closer to, to marketing and, and opening of the units.
I mean, we have it early and once we do bake it, I'll certainly share with you, but I actually got it the other day and haven't even been through it yet.
And, and D H C D is also involved in that process and actually approves the marketing plan once it's proposed.
Okay. So Lee Newman, with the information we have now and the expectation that we'll be wanting to put together a decision pretty soon, can you, can you, and, and working with Karen Sonnerberg, come up with a proper condition that reflects what we're being told?
I think we can come up with a condition. It would certainly be helpful if you, if, if this team could give us some more, you know, quantifiable, you know, what, what, what exactly are you proposing? You know, what units within what classification, what size, so that we can incorporate that in the decision. And there's an understanding of the total number of units and what their distribution looks like and some specifics in terms of what's being proposed.
My problem with that, and I'll defer to Louise, is that what we're working on right now, we don't know if the state is going to accept yet. So.
It, it does.
What we're thinking about? Sure. Can we be held to it? No, not until the state approves it.
It, it does take a bit of time to finalize the agreement with D H C D. But what I'll say is that we typically see as part of the decision of, you know, a condition or a requirement that states as required under underlying zoning, X number of units or twelve and a half percent, in our case, nine units have been committed to be affordable under the state's definition of affordable. And that's a very technical definition calculated on, you know, average state income, as you probably know. So, you know, we're happy to work with you on the, the exact language to make sure that that's perfectly clear.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are you opting for the fifty percent of of, of, of median income, the fifty percent, a hundred percent mix? Or are you opting for eighty percent or whatever?
Believe we're doing eighty percent, right, Louise?
In this case, it's eighty percent. That's required.
Okay, just want to know. Okay. All right. I think, let me see, I may have just. Yeah, I think we already, a question I had is on your, when you compared traffic levels at various intersections in the traffic report. In my head, I was thinking we were comparing, you know, at a time when the prior use, we're comparing the prior use. Are those like level of service, you know, the level of service data? When you compare a level of service before and after, are you comparing the, the building as if there were no traffic coming from it, it's vacant? Or we're using the I T E numbers for the prior use? Or what exactly is the comparison?
All right. So the level of service comparison is representative of the building being vacant. We did not, we, we estimated the trips associated with the previous land use for just a side by side trip comparison, but we didn't layer them into our level of service capacity analysis. And so the analysis in the report, because of that, really is conservative because we're, 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 it would be expected that with the trips from the prior land use layered in, the, the, the change in level of service would, would, sorry, the level of service associated with the previous land use would be worse than what it is with the proposed land use.
Excellent. I'm, I'm very glad to have that explanation. And I understand what you mean about being conservative as if you were presenting the worst case kind of, kind of data. Right. Now, I read in what, in the traffic study, and I live, I don't, I don't live close enough to be in a butter, but I live down the hill, hillside at Rosemary Ridge condominium. And so I'm quite familiar with the intersection of West Street and Hillside. Walked through it quite a lot. And very pleased to hear that pedestrian improvements are being done. And I had seen that in a town report previously. But in your report, you say they're going to start them in May two thousand twenty-one. That's two weeks. Do you know that they are on schedule for that May?
No, Hillside and West was two thousand twenty-two, I thought.
Correct. Yeah. And so the, the documentation from the approved prioritization plan from the town approved by Mast originally had a May two thousand twenty-one construction date. Obviously, since then, COVID has happened and, and many things are, have been in flux. And so the most recent information we have, which is not reflective, reflected in the traffic impact study is that they'll be funded in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Well, I certainly hope that happens for the sake of our entire neighborhood, but also for the sake of the people who will occupy the New Carter Mill building. But it does seem that with your reconstruction and likely occupancy date, that that project will, you know, come along just around the time that people are moving.
And just the clarification, you know,
Yes.
provided was successful, we break on the end of this year. We have, you know, close to two years of construction, so it'll be the end of two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. Okay.
For opening.
All right. Thank you. But I was so, I was so excited. I put a big question, exclamation point on the idea that that work was going to get started in two weeks. So disappointed.
The drainage work on Hills, on Highland is supposed to stop pretty soon, I believe. Rated that.
Well, those are my questions. So unless any planning board member has a follow-up question at this time, I'm just going to move to the communication.
Madam Chair.
You do, Adam. Yes, go ahead.
You have follow-up questions. I think, Lee, you, you mentioned just a second ago that the town is about to embark on a drainage improvement project at or near the site.
Right, right on Highland at the end. I believe it's the intersection of West and Highland.
That's, I think, my, my understanding as well. One of the recommendations that I believe D P W made was to include a recharge station. And to do that while construction's happening so that although it may not necessarily be a requirement, it was certainly recommended. And I don't know if that's the kind of thing that's done when the town is doing its work or when you're under construction on your work.
Are you car recharging? Is that what you're talking about?
Say that again.
You mean car charging?
No, no, I mean a stormwater recharge.
Oh, that.
I was going to mention that when I read what came from the D P W. I, I understand they are looking for something to be done now.
Well, I, I followed up with that and the engineering department was trying to be helpful to us and give us a heads up that the law doesn't require it now. But in the future, EPA may change their rules and regulations to require it. Now, whether it's retroactive or whatever gets that far, no one knows. And he was just saying, if you want to, you know, kind of guess what EPA may require in the future and you want to do it now, think about it. You know, you might end up saving some money. And I think our feeling is that if it's not required now, we don't really know if it's ever going to be required. And we'd rather not do that work now. Because we really don't know what it's going to say. So we, and again, I, I checked with engineering. It's not like they're making a recommendation that we do the work now. It's kind of giving, giving us a heads up so that we, we know about it. I think our choice is to stick with the law at present.
Well, as long as we're talking about that recommendation, I'll give you another opportunity, Adam, but what, what Roy Kramer is referring to is the April fourteenth letter to the planning board from Thomas Ryder, Assistant Town Engineer, with comments and recommendations. And there's three. And one of them, the first one is a standard with regarding, with regard to the required Nipody's requirement for public outreach and education. And that, that a letter has been submitted and he's just saying that letter should be referenced in, as a condition in our decision. And I assume that you go along with that.
And that's fine. That's fine.
So this is the, what's referred to as the suggestion. The engineering division suggests that the applicant provide some stormwater recharge on site in order to minimize future disruptions. If EPA subjects properties greater than one acre in size to this requirement. And then it goes on to say a stormwater recharge proposal is not a requirement at this time as the project does not trigger new construction standards. However, it may be advantageous to add while the site is under construction. But what I hear you saying is you've considered this and you're not, you're not inclined to do it. Is it? Who's going to speak to that?
Well, David Kelly may be better to speak to that. But right now our plans, aside from the landscape, we're, and just redoing a little of the parking. This wasn't, this isn't an excavation of the parking lot. I mean, on, on a brand new build, yep, we're doing recharge, we're excavating down five feet on the entire site. None of that's happening here. So, and that, in addition to not understanding what the, how the reg would read, we could be doing something that was a waste of time that would have to redo. But David Kelly would be better to speak to this than me.
Yeah, I can, Madam Chair, I could add just a little color because you'll probably hear this comment again, as my guess in future projects. So essentially, and not to get really into the weeds, but we've been tracking this as Tony and various other engineers and public works department. Essentially, it's the result of a lawsuit that the Charles River Watershed Association filed against the EPA claiming that the EPA wasn't properly protecting the Charles River watershed. And it, it's unknown how that lawsuit is going to finalize or what will come out of it. But, you know, the, the thought process is there may be ultimately a requirement for additional stormwater recharge within the watershed. And, you know, just as an aside and not to really get in the weeds on it, but the D E P tried to bring something like this in two thousand and seven. And between politics and, and, and various sectors that are opposed, if they dropped it. So we don't know what's going to happen. We don't even know what it would look like. And so Lee properly described that we could, even if we went ahead and did something now, there's a fair chance what we're doing will or won't, will or will not comply with what may come out of this lawsuit. So that's why we think it's wise as to stand by and wait to see what happens. And, and if anything.
Right. Thank you. I, I think I, I understand your response. And there's a third bullet point about the Highland Avenue and West Street project that, that Adam mentioned scheduled for this summer and fall. And it, point is made that the existing facility that is, you know, Carter Mill built facility here may have an existing sump pump connected to the town's drain system, which may need to be renewed during, during construction.
I, I think that's.
I, I'll let David respond in a second. But when I read that, I, I thought that might be a typo. Instead of renewed, he means reviewed.
That's correct. Yeah, that, that is, that, that's correct, Roy. So essentially, Madam Chair, there, there is a sump pump in the basement that appears to have been a relic of past issues on the site relating to the capacity in the storm drains. It's been really, what Tom Ryder told me is that. past issues on the site relating to the capacity in the storm drains. It's been really, what Tom Ryder told me is that he expected that once this storm drainage project is complete, that, that there should be no concern anymore and that that some pump that's in there, which apparently is not activated anytime recently, will no longer be needed. So he, he was, he meant to say renewed in that, in that comment. And you were pleased to discuss it with him further and we have no issue with the comment. We certainly comply with whatever Tom wants us to do there, but we don't, we don't think it's ending this substantive.
Yes. And, and let me just add to that, that he said, you know, for the most part, this is a heads up that we're going to be doing some work in that area and we may need to coordinate some timing issues. And just again, giving us a heads up, which we appreciate it.
All right. Adam, I may have interrupted you. I don't know if you had something else you wanted to say or ask.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I was just curious, but I'm sure you're about to, to get to it. If the applicant has a response or a plan on how to respond to the recommendations provided by the Department of Health.
I can, I, I've spoken, I believe, we, we have spoken. You know, in terms of the dumpster enclosure, it's been modified to make sure we can accommodate, you know, the appropriate recycling. We went, most of her issues were pretty standard issues. We did discuss our commercial kitchen and the swimming pool. And she just cautioned us to get into her early. We're working on that right now. I expect we'll probably be, have some information before her in about a month, well before anything we do with the building permit. And similarly with the pool for staffing and, and proper, you know, all, all the proper bells and whistles that go with it. But yes, we've been in communication and she was pleased.
So just to clarify it, because I hadn't mentioned those comments yet. They, you know, she says, first of all, you need the proper food permits. Well, you know, of course. Then she talks about sufficient trash and separate recycling dumpster accommodations for both, both kitchens and independent living housing units.
Only just for clarification, there's one commercial kitchen. The other.
There's one.
But there's only one place they'll be doing the actual cooking.
Oh, so by both, she must mean both the. Does say kitchens. So there's, there's just one kitchen. Okay.
There's one commercial kitchen, then we bring everything down to warming stations for memory care.
I see. Okay. Haven't been vacant. So a certified pest control company must be contracted. You, you, you're going, going to go along with that.
Oh, absolutely. That's.
And then general things about no odors, light migration, standing water. And she, she comments on the buffering that exists along the railroad tracks and to the south and wants to see those preserved. And I see in your, in your report, your landscaping report, that they are to be preserved. So I'll just finish the comments here, because there's only a couple more. There was a positive comment that came in by email from the Village Club, which is around the corner, just across Highland Avenue on Morton Street. And the Board of Directors at the Village Club is, wants to send this note of approval for this project going forward. And says that the development team has been very forthcoming with us. And as an ambassador, we believe this project will be a great addition to the community. And then, so we dealt with the Board of Health. The fire department has no issues with the project. We talked about the DPW and the police does not have any concern. Except, and I suppose this will be a condition of, of any permit that we give that make sure the, the site workers for the construction park on site and do not take up any parking, public parking.
Yes, that, that's, that's fine. That's what you usually put in and we expected that.
So that takes care of the comments. Anything else before I turn to the attenders? Paul Halbert?
Yes, some, something that I thought of late, late in the game. And if I'm misremembering your plans, stop me and I'll, and I'll stop. Your traffic study seems, seems to be concentrating on West Street. But my recollection is that you have this access to the parking lot at the south side of the building. That is, if not directly across from Morton Street, it's very near Morton Street on the other side of Highland Avenue. My recollection of the artist's rendering is that along Highland Avenue, there is parking and then, and then at the end of the parking, but before the entrance to this parking lot, the sidewalk kind of juts out. And I don't remember if there's going to be a tree there. Can, can you just talk a little bit about the use of, of that entrance and exit into the parking? And whether, whether you have some idea of how much use you expect that to, to, to have and how it will affect that section of Highland Avenue and that intersection with, with Morton Street? I'm thinking about sightlines, making sure that oncoming traffic can see cars coming, coming in here and going out there and that cars going in, in and out from here have a clear view of, of what's coming along Highland Avenue.
Certainly. So as it relates to the amount of traffic coming in and out of that Highland Avenue intersection, we, it was about fifty-fifty between the two intersections. As I mentioned earlier in, in answering one of Adam's questions, when we're looking at the number of vehicles for any particular movement, they're really only in the three to six vehicles per hour down at that intersection. So, you know, during the weekday afternoon peak hour, we're showing six people turning right out of the project site driveway to head south on Highland Avenue. And we're showing five people on Highland Avenue traveling northbound to turn left into the site. So a total of eleven vehicles coming to and from Highland Avenue to the south. And the way we modeled it, we did include Morton Street as part of that intersection so that we could capture any potential impacts associated with it. And based on the analysis, the Morton Street approach is really not shown to change at all with the additional, with the addition of the project site trips exiting that Highland Avenue intersection. I think it, it's an increase in delay of less than a second during both the weekday morning and weekday afternoon peak hours. And similarly on Highland Avenue, the analysis is showing that there's no significant or really any impact associated with the turning movements in and out of that driveway. As it relates to sightlines, perhaps Ben can, can talk about the landscaping proposed. But based on our review, the sightline, particularly looking to the north towards the signalized intersection, is primarily obstructed by the existing onsite parking. And so given the nature of, of this kind of area, as you mentioned, there's lots of pedestrians around, a lot of just general activity. It's very common for vehicles to do what we call a two, two-stage gap acceptance. And so instead of just arriving at the stop bar, looking each direction and then proceeding, because there is a lot of stuff going on, including adjacent on-street parking, vehicles will arrive at the stop bar and look at the sidewalk, make sure there's no pedestrians there, and then they'll kind of inch towards the travelway in order to be able to see around what is already existing for the onsite street traffic. So I don't know, Ben, if, if you want to touch on the landscaping in that kind of curb extension down that way.
Yeah, just, just briefly, looking left coming out of that parking lot there, that's an existing island on the Highland Avenue side. It's a, it's a lawn island between the sidewalk and the street. That actually, I think, helps us a little bit in that it holds the parked, the parallel parked cars along Highland Avenue back from that intersection, essentially giving us a little bit larger sight triangle to see the oncoming traffic heading south on Highland, if you were to take a left on the Highland out of the parking lot. Additionally, the, the existing tree that's there is a very low-branched flowering tree. We're adding a shade tree there that will be branched up, you know, six, seven feet in the air. So that will also help underneath the branches of the tree with the sightlines looking left coming out of that driveway.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
Okay. So if board members at this time are satisfied enough, because we can turn back to you. I, I do want to see if there are any persons in attendance who have, who would like to be recognized. And Alex Cle, can you explain to persons what they do to be recognized?
Sure. We have two people raising their hand already, but that's the first thing is to quote, raise your hand.
All right. Alex, you're, you're, you've got static. So let's try again. You said, raise your hand. That's the first thing.
Yep, you raise your hand. So there's a, there's a button at the bottom of the screen that should say raise hand and that is what you do. And then, you know, Eugene or, or me, if you want, we'll call on people.
All right. So there's a button. It should be a button at the bottom of your screen, raise your hand. And if you wish to be recognized, go ahead and do that and we'll call on you.
And just an additional note, if anybody's attending via phone, like called in, if you wish to raise your hand, you can press star nine.
Thank you. Thank you, Clay Hutchinson. So if you're on the phone and you wish to raise your hand, press star nine.
Okay, so we currently have four raised hands. I'll go ahead and start with the person listed as Joni. Shock it. Just a moment while I move you over. You should be able to unmute yourself.
I did, I think.
Yes, hello, Joni.
Hi, I have a couple of questions. First, do you have any idea, a guesstimate of the number of employees that will be working at this facility?
I think I can answer that. The, for the assisted living, memory care, there would be a total of fifty-eight employees on the largest shift. And so that, that would be the number. Again, the other, the other shifts are, are substantially lower. I don't have those numbers.
And that, that is full and part-time.
Okay. So that would be the most that would be there at any one time?
That is correct.
And in independent, they can hire their own if they want an aide or if they want a cleaning person or something like that?
Yeah, those are services we do provide, but yes, they could certainly do that.
Does your parking estimate or your parking capacity take the employees into consideration? Does it? Okay. And the, the other part of that question is truck deliveries. Are there deliveries seven days a week for linens and food and all that kind of stuff that goes into this type of a facility?
No, we usually, we, what we usually get is a bread truck sized delivery with, with fresh produce and breads. The box truck, which is about a twenty-four foot box truck, usually it's three times a week at the most. So we try and limit those. Our residents are our biggest critics and they don't want to hear all the truck traffic. So we do try as much as possible.
That's good. And then the other question is visitors. I don't imagine in the parking lot that you've outlined, there is room for parking for visitors. Is that correct? There may be a few spaces, but it didn't look like a lot.
Well, the actual demand for our employees and our folks is in the high eighties, low nineties that Aaron pointed out. We have a hundred and forty-nine spaces. So we feel, we're very comfortable with our ability for guests and the visitors and all that.
Okay. That's, that's my concern. I, I live in the Heights. We're looking at increased traffic and the widening only to Webster and then more, you know, trucks and traffic and, and visitors all weekend. But you seem to have that pretty much. I'm sure it'll overflow at times, Mother's Day, holidays, et cetera.
Yeah. And usually if we're seeing a circumstance like that come up, we'll go make a deal with somebody that's, you know, that's not open for business on the day we're doing a major event and valet. Very common, we do that.
That's good. Can you, will you have the ability to park in the center for the Heights? The, the, the unused T parking spaces?
Allow it.
So do you have to make arrangements with the T?
Yeah, we'd have to make arrangements with anybody off-site to be able to utilize their parking. And that is something that, what we, is very common for us to do.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Ms. Shawke, what is your, what is your address?
Oh, I'm at one seventy-four Evelyn Road.
Okay, thank you very much for your.
Pretty much walking distance from the, the place. We walk to the, you know, we walk to CVS and all those stores around there.
Yes, but perhaps I'll say hi to you someday.
Okay.
Walking around. All right, thank you. Let's see now. If there's, so do we have somebody else who's raised their hand?
Yes, we still have four hands. So next I will do Michael Weintraub. Sorry, I did not pronounce that correctly. All right. And you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi.
Hello, Mr. Weintraub. What is your, what is your address?
Hi, let me, there we go. I am the owner representative for four sixty Hillside Avenue.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So you're a budding business owner.
Yes. And if you want to pull a slide up, this kind of shows us, but there's some more illustrative slides about where we are located, right on the other side of the track. Yeah, that's a good one, right there. Where with the, right on the other side of the tracks where the L is. And there's an, yeah, an office building and a warehouse with solar panels on it. So that's our lot right there. First, I just want to thank everybody, all the presenters for a really nice presentation and to the board members who really asked some nice questions. And then secondly, I just wanted to, if this is the same Lee Bloom that was a colleague of mine over thirty years ago, highly. So a, as the owner rep of four sixty, the owner has a few concerns. And Adam and Marty really addressed a few of those more indirect concerns. And rather than repeat some of their questions, let me just add one or two. With respect to the drainage, do you have a sense of what the allocation or estimate is of either gallons per unit that you based your estimates on? Or total gallons as opposed to what it was previously?
I would have to defer to David Kelly on stormwater and sanitary is a hundred fifty gallons per bed per day.
Okay.
And then, Lee, just to respond on the storm drainage, there's no change in storm drain runoff from this site because there's no change to impervious area.
Okay. And, and, yeah, and the hundred fifty gallons per unit is definitely reasonable. Do you have any sense of total gallons now compared to total gallons previously?
Boy, I know with the hundred forty-two bed skilled nursing and sixty assists, you know, two hundred and two. I'm sorry, I'll do some quick math. So we'll go two, two times one fifty.
Yeah, it, it, it's more of, and you don't have to do the math now. I just raise it as a concern.
It's a reduction from the prior use.
Okay, okay.
And, and I will tell you one other fact is the one fifty is the DEP design flow that we have to design to. I did all our communities regularly. I look it up to all the sewer bills. Our real average is eighty per unit. The real average, although the design is one fifty and we have to account for one fifty, the real reality is eighty.
Right. Yeah, it's typically eighty per. Right, yeah, it's typically eighty per person. And then on the transportation and traffic studies, I can't, again, I echo a lot of what Adam said and I don't want to repeat some of that. But I, I am a little concerned, or the client is a little concerned about the inflow and exflow out onto West Street. And I, I guess we're not convinced that it really is a lesser amount of traffic overall than what was previously there. And even if it were, I guess the question is, was the traffic flow, when it was full, was that adequate? In other words, simply because it's estimated to be less than it was, where you're starting from, is that, does that necessarily mean that it was correct or the right traffic flow before? And I guess you add in kind of knowing assisted living places. And this kind of environment, there'll be ambulances and fire trucks going in and out of there. Not on a constant basis, but along with the additional traffic on West Street with the railroad tracks and the traffic lights. And so I raise it more of a concern than, and kind of echo what has previously been said. So I, I just want to kind of make the point that we're not overly satisfied that the traffic study is as complete as it could be with respect to what it has been and ultimately what it will be and how it will impact that entire area going to Hillside Avenue. And again, we're pleased with the, I, I think, expected pedestrian walkways and whatnot. But we also have between the bikers and the pedestrians and the traffic commuting into Hillside Avenue coming off the railroad or commuter rail. Will, what's that going to really look like and what will be the impacts? So that is just an overall concern, not a real question there.
Yeah, I, I did have the luxury of working for Cam Matrix in ninety-three when the building was converted. And I was there ten years and I know over that period of time as we were operating that building, I'm not aware of any complaints related to traffic. I am very comfortable that the uses we're proposing have lower traffic impacts than anything else that could go there. I'm very comfortable with that.
And then in terms of the impact on the building itself, we have concerns about the fourth floor. What's the additional height there?
We have a max height of forty-four feet to top a roof and then we were allowed some additional footage for elevator override.
So looking, this isn't really a great representation. Actually, it's probably looks worse than it really is. But on the office part of the building, we have real concerns. I was there today of the blockage of both view and sunlight with that fourth floor addition as we look out over the, especially the third floor of the office part of the building. And I don't know, you know, you, several of the speakers talked about the, talked about the setback, but I guess the setback to Highland is kind of the frontal assault over on the other side. And I don't know if any impact studies or visuals were done to show what that impact actually means to, again, the sunlight and the view over there because it definitely will be impactful.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand which is the property you're particularly concerned about, Mr. Weintraub. Did you say the address is four sixty Hillside?
Yes.
Yes, and looking at this, which is displayed on the screen, if, if you're going, going into the parking lot that's on the south side of the Carter Mill Building.
Yes.
If you were able to just walk right across the tracks where those trains are.
Yes.
Is that your building?
Yes.
All right, so that we, the, we were not provided with shadow studies. But just knowing the direction of the sun and so forth here, wouldn't the, there even the rising sun seems as though it would directly go through the parking lot to your building. And it's hard to envision this sunlight being blocked. But I wonder, perhaps Mr. Kelly would be the best one to address that?
Either that or Michelle.
Michelle.
Yeah, I mean, I can jump in just really quickly. Based on just the orientation, so you know, Highland runs north-south. So north is kind of up in this upper right-hand corner of the page. So as the sun is rising, you know, around kind of, can you guys see my cursor when I move it around? Okay, yeah, so you know, the sun is going to be kind of rising in the east right about, you know, here or here, depending upon, you know, summer or winter. And then as it travels around the entire south side, I mean, we did not, we didn't look at an exact view corridor through here. But this setback is pretty substantial at the, you know, fourth level. And I would imagine there would be very little to no kind of impact in terms of how that sunlight is moving around the building as it pertains to, you know, your building right here. You know, this setback was defined based on views in this direction, not just, you know, the parallel view, but you know, kind of looking at it as a, as a whole, right? So how that entire kind of bar reacts. So I would imagine, you know, again, probably, I don't know if the site plan, David, your site plan has the adjacent buildings on it, but based on the perspective, you know, we're, we're pushed very far back and pushed to the north. Right? So it'd be one thing if we were pushing to the south, but we're pushing north away from where your property is. So I would imagine there would be extremely minimal impact, if any, from a light standpoint.
Well, yeah, I mean, I was, I'm sorry, did somebody want to?
No, that is, that is fine. I think Ms. Hobbs was finished. Are you satisfied with that response with regard to shadows?
It, it's not only the shadows and I'm not convinced of that, but it's also the view. Because I, I'm not sure that, well, I know this isn't to scale, but as I was there today and I actually took pictures out of the window, it, it definitely is an impact. How much of an impact, you know, I think remains to be seen. Pardon the pun there, but it, right now, it's at a certain level below that third floor. And so a rise over on that side of the building will certainly be impactful. Both from a light standpoint, but also a view standpoint. So again, not so much to debate it here, but to bring it to everybody's attention that it is a real issue. And to the extent that, you know, somebody wants to come over and take a look, happy to kind of show that.
Okay, thank you. I saw that Mr. Block had his hand raised, a member of the planning board. Did you want to respond or ask for clarification on these points, Adam?
Yes, thank you. I just was curious, Lee, if you're able to speak to, how tall is the fourth floor itself? Is that an additional ten feet off the existing roof line? Is it?
Correct. That, that is correct, right, Michelle?
Um, yeah, right about, so you have a parapet, right? So the existing roof is actually lower than the building reads. But yes, that's right about ten feet from that, in terms of, you know, what you're adding. And it just, so, you know, some of the things that we are working with, some of the existing mechanical units that are up there, you know, there's quite a large cooling tower. There's, there's quite a lot of mechanical units kind of spread throughout. You know, those are falling at that forty, they're right about forty-one feet tall, reading from, you know, along the roof. So, you know, as Lee was saying, we have forty-four is kind of the top. And then that plus or minus for the elevator mechanical overrun. So.
How tall is the elevator overrun above the existing roof line? Is it, is that fourteen feet?
No, the elevator, oh, the existing roof line. Yeah, around there, yeah. It's about a four-foot overrun.
I think, I think, I think the zoning allowance is forty-nine for the top of override. So, but we think we'll.
Right, and forty-four for the other.
Right.
But that, is it true that that's farther north? I'm looking at the building as shown.
That is correct.
Point to what you're speaking of, yes. Yes.
And it's about, if I were to overestimate, let's we call it an eight by ten. And that's, that's a large kind of overrun.
And the other one is way to the northern part of the building.
Correct, up here.
Okay.
I am. If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, oh, what is it, Adam?
So the, if you're, I'm looking at your client's property. And I'm looking at the farthest, most northern bank of windows. Do those, exactly right. Do those bank of windows correspond to the edge of the, of the subject property?
Um, there kind of, I guess, in the middle of that L. You know, I, I can't give you the exact kind of dimensions, but, but generally speaking, yes. I mean, again, I don't think that this diagram is so much to scale, but the windows definitely overlook that L shape. You know.
I just drew a quick blue line. So this is as, as the scale as, you know, we can get it based on the aerial view. But you can see kind of the edge of the building is like half, right around the midway point, right? So you're, you're, you are kind of falling within that L, I would say.
Although people, you know, are not only looking straight, the, the view is not only straight ahead, it's diagonally as well. And the light is dragged diagonally as well.
Mr. Weintraub, you, you know that though, what's going to be up there are these residential penthouse units with their little outdoor sitting areas. You find something unpleasant or expected to be unsightly about that?
I don't think, it, it, it's not so much about the aesthetics. You know, we haven't really focused on the aesthetics so much as, again, the, the light and the view and even perhaps the diminution in value of people coming into those offices that don't have the light and the view that they used to. I mean, I think it's really that simple. And, and I'll just bring up one other point, which may not be an issue because I just met with them today. But we also have Verizon and AT&amp;T and other companies on the rooftop. And they're actually checking with their engineers to make sure that there's no signal interference with the additional height. So I, I mention it only, not that it's an issue at this stage, but they're just checking into that, just to make sure.
Okay. All right, um, I do want to follow up on something that Mr. Weintraub said about the intersection of West Street and Hillside. In the report, on, on page twenty-seven of the traffic report, it does say, it, it describes the southbound approach to the intersection of West Street at Hillside Avenue, operating currently at a level of service F. The worst. And then during the weekday morning peak hour and at level of service D during the weekend afternoon peak hour. And it's expected to continue to operate at level of service F during the weekday morning peak hour under future no build and build conditions. And during the weekday afternoon peak hour, the southbound approach is expected to operate at level of service E under no, under either no build or build conditions. So the reason I didn't make, you know, previously make an issue of this is because it's not, it's not expected that the, the traffic from this development will make that intersection any worse at all. If we thought it was going to make it worse, we'd be looking for mitigation and solutions. But I think we have to admit that it is a very bad intersection with wait times and of course pedestrian safety that the town is addressing. We can't deny that, but at the same time, I don't know that it is the responsibility of this applicant to solve that problem. So. All right, I'd like to move on now and see if there's another person waiting.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so next on this, we have David Sherman. Be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, and let me videoize two, I hope. First of all, can you hear me?
Yes, a little bit, a little bit faint, but.
Okay.
And will you, I'll give your address or if you're a business owner, tell us and so forth?
Yep, it's basically the same as yours, ma'am. It's Andrew Rosemary Way. I am speaking in my, in my role as a nurse in an ICU and also with experience in emergency rooms and hospital emergency coordination, so disaster planning. And I, I don't have to tell anybody, of course, you know, I, I, I basically don't have any problems with the outside of this plan. But the, but, but I don't have to tell anybody that we're in the middle of a pandemic. I probably don't have to tell anybody that we are not done with this pandemic yet. And I might have to tell people that this will not be the last mass casualty event that we see. And during the, what I hope we can look back and call the early part of the pandemic last year, the Avery Manor, as it was then known, was thought of as a possible alternative care site for placing patients with the overloaded hospital beds. I know Chief Condon took a walk through it to judge whether or not the oxygen supplies were still adequate. Having been, can we say abandoned by the Avery Manor folks a couple of years or so before that. So there was some advanced planning about that. And I think that it would be wise of the board to require that if the project is approved, that it be conditional on them holding aside, I think a reasonable number is probably five to ten beds for acute care, whether that turns out to be victims of mass casualty event or overflow of other patients. And, and that's basically the only comment that I had.
Perhaps the applicant would, would speak to this because it's my understanding that you're providing memory care and assisted living. Correct?
And unlike nursing that's state reimbursed, this is all private pay. Would we work with the community? Absolutely. And, and you never know when something horrible is going to happen. And would have to evaluate where we are at that time, but from a licensure perspective, we can't provide those services. I don't know if during, and I, I, some of this, I know not of what I speak. I don't know if during a pandemic, you know, I, I, you've got the ability to take over just a couple of units. But I don't think in a decision that's something we could accept.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Sherman, yes.
I am not necessarily saying that LCB itself should be providing the staffing and the nurses and certainly not the doctors to take care of mass casualty event patients. I'm saying just that they should hold the, that, that they should hold. I'm saying just that they should hold the sta-, that, that they should hold the, you, you need three things to take care of patients in a mass casualty event, you need staff, stuff and space. I'm just asking that, that, that the owners provide, that, that the owners provide the space for a small number of patients among their.
And not knowing, if we're at ninety-eight percent occupancy, we're not going to have space. That's what, we're talking about unknowns, I just don't know.
Yeah, it would very, it would be very difficult for us to leave empty units from an economic standpoint, based on the way a deal like this works. We'd certainly be, you know, part of the community and a team player and, you know, pitched to help any way that we could, but it'd be very difficult to promise that we're going to hold those units open in case something happens.
And, you know, speaking as Chair of the Planning Board, you know, quite a few years of experience in land use law, I, I actually question whether we could put any, any conditions such as that in, in a special permit. I think it would go beyond the type of things that we are authorized to consider and, and put conditions on. Mr. Sherman. I don't want to give you hope that we would do such a thing, I'm doubtful that we would feel empowered to do that, actually. So.
May I respond, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The, another thing I don't have to tell anybody is that this pandemic is entirely unprecedented. And so, while, while there may be matters of law here that, that I'm completely unfamiliar with, I do think it would still be good planning to, to, to be able to have a small numbers of spaces reserved.
Okay, thank you for that comment, it's really something to think about. I appreciate, did you say that you live at One Hundred Rosemary Way?
Yes, I do, I think.
So, we're neighbors?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay, let's say hi. All right, David, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, then. So, I think we have one or two more people commenting.
There have been a couple more hands, currently there are four raised still. The next person is a phone number, so I'm going to move you over, and then once you come in as a panelist, the phone should prompt you that it's star six to be able to unmute yourself, so just bear with me.
Okay, and while that person is coming on, I just want to mention that it is getting to be ten o'clock. And although our agenda doesn't have further items that are time-consuming, you know, we're, we're getting so, it might feel as though we want to continue the hearing. I wouldn't want to go many longer than ten thirty. What, what do colleagues think? On the board?
I would say, let's finish up with one or two more members of the public.
Tonight, all right, Paul Alpert, did you have something?
No, I, I didn't mean to do that, sorry.
Okay, so the individual who was just recognized, who is that?
Hi, my name is Pam Fernandez. And I've lived in the Heights for about twenty-five years, currently living over at Three Hundred Second Avenue. I just wanted to lend a voice to pedestrian safety, because I was living close to Trader Joe's and CVS for the first about twenty years I was here. And I am visually impaired, so I think I have good knowledge about the things that, for pedestrian safety, are more of a concern. And I love the fact that the current project can, you know, feed into the center at the Heights. I think that's wonderful, but the safety of pedestrians in that area, I think all of you have noted, and it's, I don't think anybody would argue that, that's a difficult situation. So, if you'll give me a minute, I'll tell you where, I, I used to live on Hillside, and I used to live on Alfredin, so those are both within five to seven minutes walking of Trader Joe's. And I did used to walk around there a lot when I lived closer. So, I, when I lived on Hillside, I re-, I personally reported three accidents, automobile accidents, because I was walking around there and I heard them. So, I, you know, I think we all know that that intersection is quite bad. And I know that one of the presenters did say that they were thinking about putting a flashing light at that, you know, to get over Hill, to get over West Street from the project site to the opposite side of the street, and that, that the town might be considering some flashing lights. I would like to add that you, that there might want to be consideration put into an auditory signal as well, because the populations, both at, at the new site and at the center of the Heights, people, a lot of people will have reduced vision, but will maybe not allow that to stop them from their independent walking in that area. So, I'd like to suggest maybe that. And I, I'm not sure that who, who's bailiwick that will fall into. Also, the driveway that's coming out onto West Street, if there is a way to stop the cars from lining up bumper to bumper as they're waiting to exit the parking area, I know you addressed the, the Highland Avenue exit, and I think that's great, that there's almost like a buffer zone where they have to slow down and stop before they can continue on. On the, on the West Street side, I don't think that's, that happened. A lot of cars were bumper to bumper, and as I was trying to get in between them, well, one time I actually got lost, lost. I got disoriented and ended up in the parking area. And, um, so I'd like to see if that, that, that exit can't be somehow managed. And then up at Highland and, and, and West Street, there, there are auditory signals there, and they have been lifesavers to me for the days that they worked, which was most days. But the right on reds and the left arrows and the, it makes it really hard, even if you're, you, excuse me, using the auditory signal, it's not quite long enough to get all the way across the intersection safely. So, I did kind of want to just bring a little bit of attention to that.
Thank you, and I think one of our speakers mentioned that, although this project applicant is not responsible for any of those improvements.
Yeah, that's why I didn't know, except for maybe that driveway.
Yes, the driveway, of course, but it sounds like they've been trying to keep up with, by contact with the town officials on what is proposed. And I did hear that at the corner of the intersection of Highland Avenue and West Street, the timing, as you mentioned, the timing of the pedestrian signals is, seems to be off. And there should be a concern for having it longer to give the pedestrians the true opportunity to cross that intersection.
Yes.
So, that's, I guess, when it comes to, you know, you're speaking to the planning board, and even if it's not the responsibility.
I know, I wasn't quite sure, yeah, I wasn't quite sure.
Right, we, we can to keep that in mind and try to use whatever influence we may have to make sure that these intersections are in fact improved for pedestrian access.
Just as much as can be, and I, I, when it came up in the meeting tonight, I thought, oh, this is a great opportunity to just bring to the fore that there are people who have significant vision loss, and there are people who have less significant vision loss, but will unlikely want people to know that, I mean, that's their personal safety. But people who don't necessarily see super well, or older people whose reflexes are not quite as good, are going to need that little bit of extra time. And, you know, to walk between the cars coming out of the driveway on the West Street side, I literally had to go behind three cars once, just so I could wedge in between them to come back up to the sidewalk on West Street. So, if there's any consideration that could be put in there, I think it would be, you know, well-served by the, the people who will be living there.
Well, perhaps the applicant's traffic engineer could have some, some solution for cars lining up when to exit. But I think also the expectation has been explained to us that it's, in a certain period of time, I think it was an hour, there would only be likely three to five cars entering or exiting. So, the prospect of bunches of cars lining up, such as you might have a change of shift, you know, that kind of use, just doesn't seem as though that would, would be an issue here.
That would be great. Even three, you still have to walk behind, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, could we, can I just suggest that those comments, which I think are very valuable comments and important, can we just suggest that those comments be forwarded to the town authorities who are trying to put in place those pedestrian improvements? That's, can that be part of their consideration? I, I don't think, you know, I don't think this is the best forum for those comments, but I think they're, no, no, don't be sorry. I, I think they're important comments, I just think they should get to where they're going to be most useful.
Yes. And if the, Lee, is there a general email address that the speaker can use?
I can coordinate with her afterwards, and certainly we can share this with the DPW and the Engineering Division.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we have two more speakers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know whether the Traffic Advisory Committee would be involved in that also.
That's true, the town has a Traffic Advisory Committee.
Right, that would probably be another good source.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, is it two more potential speakers, is that correct, Clay?
It looks like we have three more.
Okay, all right, I may, I may have to, I, I, please, I, I sort of plead with the speakers that if the issue has been raised before, it's exactly the same. Try to make your comments brief, but we do want to hear from you.
Okay, so next we have Mary Lynn.
Mary Lynn?
We may have hope there, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Molly Line, and I live at Three Twenty-three Hillside Ave. I am so in favor of this project, I want to thank Lee Bloom for bringing it, bringing it this far. I think it's going to be great for the neighborhood, it's been really depressing to see the landscape and building deteriorate. And I'm really happy about it. And I just want to reassure Mr. Weintraub, I live up here, I really don't think the light is going to be affected in his building, we have beautiful light up here on the hill very early in the morning, maybe it would affect how much light's getting into the building at four sixty, but I bet it's not going to be a big deal. And that's all, thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lynn, appreciate it.
Line.
Line, sorry, line, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, all right, so we have perhaps two more speakers, questioners?
Yep, and the next person coming in is Artie Crocker. And you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Got it, that's Clay, appreciate it, just, just a couple of really minor things. One, one, one is, one question is, and I apologize if I missed this, more of a curiosity, the windows in this is going to be any type of soundproofing style windows going into this building for the residences, because the trend near there, and that's one question. The other thing is kind of an observation, so as I think a lot of you know, I'm in the solar industry, and so, I, I, I do a lot of observations of the sun traveling, what's going on with shadow. And I certainly, I, I agree with, I think, Aaron, who might have mentioned the rise of the sun, where it was coming from perhaps. And I would say minimal at best, you know, if we're looking at the two buildings over there, one with the solar panels on it, one next to it, solar panels and that building itself has zero effect, from what I can see, absolutely no effect from that fourth floor going on, and the other building is at best a very little bit. And even then, it would only be a very little bit in the summer sun, as it's rising about ten degrees past north. So, yeah, I'd say very little at best, so I just leave it at the curiosity about the soundproof windows, thank you.
And just, I can just address that quickly, if you'd like, Madam Chair?
Yes, I, I would like that adjusted, I'm very glad you raised that, Mr. Crocker.
We are, we are working with an acoustical consultant, right now he's evaluating various windows for us and doing some modeling, so we make sure we do choose the right window. Clearly, we have to, we're not going to have residents if it's too noisy. So, we're evaluating windows right now, there will be acoustical strength windows on there, over there, and we're very aware of that, and thank you.
All right. So.
Our last hand here appears to be Dan Matthews.
Oh, Dan Matthews. Good.
You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Madam Chairman, good to see you this evening.
Yes, thank you for, for coming on here.
Well, thank you. My name is Dan Matthews, I live at Thirty-One Rosemary Street. I'm a member of the Select Board, but I'm not representing the Select Board here this evening. But I, I'd like to note that the Select Board did support the underlying zoning, which was adopted specifically to enable this process, this project. I live in the area and I've worked in, in the neighborhood at intervals for many, many years. The project, as you, as we've, as we've, as you've walked through it here, this is what was presented to the Select Board, it is what was presented to Town Meeting and overwhelmingly approved there. It's a good use for the site, it's very similar, although updated for, for current needs and requirements to what was there, there previously, and those uses were a good fit with the neighborhood and, and the area, and were a benefit to the, to the community and even the region in terms of the service for the, for the, the existence of that kind of housing and, and care for the, for the folks that, that, that live, that live there. So, in summary, I guess my, I'm, I'm asking as a, as a resident and to a certain extent as a participant, although this is all subject to your board's discretion, that the project is what, as far as I can see, although it's complex and there are a lot of details as you've discussed, this is what the proponents asked the, the Town Meeting members to approve and to allow them to do. And I would, I would ask that in consideration that you would allow them to go forward as presented, subject to the usual terms and conditions that your board would impose in this kind of case regarding construction management and so forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you.
All right, so we have heard all the persons who wish to be recognized to speak. So, do any board members have anything further to comment on or, or ask? And then, I, I'm supposing we will close the hearing and would decide whether we wish to make a decision tonight or wait till our next opportunity. So, any further comments or questions, Mr. Alpert?
Yeah, I, I would ask Lee Newman whether there is any reason that we should hold the hearing open until next time. And second, to your second point, given the late hour, Madam Chair, I would rather defer until next time making the decision. It's, if it were an hour ago, I'd say great, but it's, it's after ten o'clock, and we've got more items on the agenda.
Yes.
The only reason to hold the hearing open at this point would be if, if there was some additional information you wanted the applicant to provide. And if there isn't any such information, Natasha can listen to the tape and participate in the meeting, if the hearing's closed, she won't be able to answer, ask any questions, but she can listen to the tape and vote on the matter, if she, if she chooses.
I move, Madam Chair, I move to close the hearing.
I will second that motion.
All right, there's a motion, a second, and is there a further discussion of closing the hearing? Hearing none, call for a vote. Mr. Alpert?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. And the chair is aye. So we have completed this hearing. And we anticipate, at what meeting, Lee, would it be the 18th of May that we'd be expecting to make a decision? And by that time, perhaps even have a draft decision before us?
Yes, May 18th.
Can I just ask a question? When is the, is there a meeting between now and the 18th?
No. We have a special meeting tomorrow, but we don't meet again until the 18th.
Really?
Because of our meeting, Roy.
Oh, Town Meeting, okay, okay.
They do deserve a little break. No, if we, we don't get a break, we have to do Town Meeting. You're right.
All right, well, thank you very much, the team that presented, the LCB team and your attorneys, architects, landscape architects. Very good job presenting and responding to our questions.
And thank you for all your.
We do appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
So now, next on our agenda is 390 Grove Street. And we have communication regarding. Let me just get the materials in front of us in front of me here. And move these away. So what we have is communication from George Janta to Planning Director Lee Newman saying, "In connection with the above referenced definitive subdivision application, that's the 390 Grove Street subdivision, please be advised that as of last night, the applicant slash owner and the neighbors have come to an agreement concerning the property. In order to effectuate such agreement, the parties have agreed to temporarily suspend the pending subdivision proceedings. Therefore, please accept this letter as a joint request to further continue the hearing and the vote on the definitive subdivision application until the April 20th, 2021 meeting of the board. So, and the action deadline was accordingly extended to May 31st." So here we are now, subsequent on the communication was, was sent to our town clerk by Lee Newman advising her of the extension of decision and action deadline on that application. But now we have a letter, April 15th, from Attorney George Janta, saying, "In connection with the above referenced subdivision application, and in furtherance of the recent agreement between the applicant, owner and the neighbors," and he presumably is referring to a more recent agreement, "please accept this letter as a request to withdraw the definitive subdivision application for 390 Grove Street without prejudice." Now, without prejudice means, you know, he's kind of reserving the right to apply again, which it seems as though he would have a right to do anyway. But anyway, he's, he's requesting to withdraw and wants the formality of our decision to allow the withdrawal without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to allow the withdrawal of the subdivision application without prejudice. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
I just want to say, it's a good thing that it wasn't actively on the calendar because they've already complained once about having to sit through a long hearing. And this would have been the second time. It would have been heard more, more, more than two and a half hours after this scheduled time period.
So, all right, so that's our comment on this motion. It's like favorable comment. So I will now call for a vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Alpert?
Aye.
Mr. Block? Ah, you are muted, Adam.
I apologize, Madam Chair, aye.
And the chair is aye. So we have approved that withdrawal without prejudice. So now, the next item on our agenda is to determine, to add to our recommendation. We already made recommendations on these articles. Article five, of course, is the text of the Muzzy Channel 5 property, HC1 rezoning. And Article six is the, the placing of the certain geographic area within that zone. And we already sent our recommendation of recommending adoption of both those Articles five and Article six. As a result of having received further guidance from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development on April 9th, question arose whether it would be wise for us to follow the guidance of that agency. And that agency, the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development, is expressly said to be the, the agency that will interpret the new housing choice provisions of the recent economic development bill. So is part of their role in that regard. What they say is, it is recommended that the planning board, after consultation with municipal legal counsel, include in its, you know, report that's usually part of the process, the one we recently did, include in its report a determination of which voting threshold, that is, two-thirds vote or majority vote, applies to the zoning proposal. The legislative body, in other words, our Town Meeting, the legislative bodies vote consistent with that recommendation will affirm the voting threshold. So we thought we should get trouble to add to our recommendations, both for Article five and six. And then also, but even more especially for Article seven, what our recommendation is, or a determination as to the correct quantum of vote. And we've already discussed this, that the, the HC1 rezoning, Articles five and six, require a two-thirds vote. So the suggested wording that Lee Newman prepared simply says, with regard to those two articles, "After consultation with municipal council, the planning board has determined that Article five and then Article six requires a two-thirds vote of Town Meeting for adoption." So, all right, so we'll just go ahead and with regard to both Article five, is the movement, is the motion for both Article five?
Article five and six.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Block. Any further discussion on Articles five and six?
Yeah, I have, I have discussion. Have we made a determination in our report whether the site involved in this rezoning proposal is a so-called eligible location under that statute?
Well, I, I've done quite a bit of.
No, no, no.
I just want to say.
Gene, my only question is, have we made that determination?
I think the answer is.
Yes or no?
No.
Okay, so.
No, because if, unless we were to say that it's eligible for the majority vote, in which case we would be thinking about that determination. Now, there was a point in time that we thought, you know, that the interpretation of the statute keeps changing. We're at a point where the agencies keep saying one thing and then saying something else. So it's not an easy thing to deal with. But there was a point about, I don't know, months, six weeks ago, where we thought best to divide. And that's because of some wording that said, if, if some use, if, if a use requires a majority vote only, you shouldn't combine it with a use that requires a two-thirds vote. But then there was some change on the state agency's point of view about that.
So I remember, I remember, but.
Remember that. So at the time, at the time, I wanted to address your question.
Please let Marty finish his thought. He's going somewhere with this.
Okay, I, I've been to all the meetings. I remember what happened, Gene, okay? My question is, why don't we make a determination that it's an eligible location? And here's the reason. First of all, I see no harm in doing it. And I think if we do that and we put that in the report, then at Town Meeting, if, for example, the organization that's advocating, advocating for housing changes their motion to amend to add a requirement that some level of housing be required, and that motion should prevail at Town Meeting, then I think the prerequisites would be present or a determination at that time that a majority vote is appropriate. And I presume that Town Council could be spoken with ahead of time and see if he agrees. And if he agrees, then perhaps the language in our report could say, "We find that it's an eligible location, but absent, absent any requirement that housing be required, two-thirds majority vote is appropriate." If an amendment were to pass Town Meeting so that the zoning proposal can, then contains a requirement for some level of housing, then 50% major, 51% majority would be required.
For the whole of it?
I'm sorry?
You mean Marty, for the whole of it?
Sure.
So just, can I, can I get a little, ask some clarity on that?
Sure.
So are you suggest, what's the significance of that, of that determination in the, in the statute?
Of the eligible location?
Yeah, is that, that relates to the distinction between the majority and supermajority?
Well, I believe it's prerequisite for the Plink Planning Board to make that determination of eligible location before we can even get to the question of which voting threshold applies, unless, unless I'm wrong. I believe that's, that's the way I read it.
Well, if, if we were dealing with having, I mean, one, an article that we were recommending that it be a majority vote because it dealt with, with, with housing. I agree with you, Marty Jacobs, that we would put the reasoning for that determination in our decision along the lines that you suggest. But since that's not our recommendation, I, I don't see the need for it.
What I'm, but what I'm, I understand it's not our recommendation to make any of the housing a requirement in the zoning proposal. However, I believe that the housing advocates, who are strongly advocating for more housing, might in fact change their proposal to require some level of housing, which would, at that point, then change the voting requirement, I believe. That would have to be confirmed, of course, with Chris Heap. But I think we could word our report.
I think we have to go beyond Chris Heap and ask, because I'm questioning whether that motion goes beyond the four corners of where, of, of, of the zoning proposal that we've already brought. And whether Michael Fee, whether Michael Fee would say that that, that that amendment is out of order.
Why? You consult with, with Mr. Fee as well. I, I don't know if you're right about that. You might be.
What, Paul, why do you say that, that an advocate's position to require housing is outside of the four corners of?
Because we have uses by right and we have uses by special permit. I don't know that we have a category called required uses. If you want a required use that says housing, then we have to change, it seems to me, that we have to come up with a whole new zoning, a whole new zone, or just rezone this parcel as apartment one or apartment two. But, but, yeah, but upon the motion that we have of an HC1, we don't have a required use. And changing it to have a required use, I think, is beyond the four corners.
So then are we proposing now to not make a determination on the two-thirds versus majority? And wait until we get clarification from both?
I think that with the mo, with the zoning warrant article that's in front of Town Meeting and even with the zone, and even with the amendments that have been presented to us, it requires a two-thirds vote.
Oh, I agree with that. And where things sit right now.
And so Marty, look, you're, you're coming up with a total hypothetical that has not been presented to us. As far as I know, they haven't even thought of requiring that. And I question whether that, whether if they did re, if they did bring that amendment, whether, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it's a legal amendment for what's in front of Town Meeting.
But suppose it was. Suppose Mr. Fee decided it was within the four corners.
Well, why wouldn't we just address it then? Why do it now?
Well, but understand what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, what goes in the report is that we believe the voting threshold, well, first of all, we think it is an eligible location. And secondly, we believe that the voting threshold should be two-thirds unless, unless the zone, the final zoning proposal as voted at Town Meeting includes a requirement for some housing.
Yeah, now you're inviting, now you're inviting the amendment.
Exactly.
I don't want to invite the amendment. Thank you very much.
Why not?
Because I don't want that amendment. I don't want to have required housing at this site. That's not what we've discussed for the past five years. If you want to have quiet housing, let's discuss it. Let's have hearings on it. Let's have open meetings on it. But I don't want to make the determination tonight that we're going to. Presented. I'm not ready to say that. I'm already upset that we've got all these amendments that we have not vetted. They should be vetted in open meetings. And that's what we've been doing for five years.
We are going to be talking about those amendments tomorrow. I'm, I'd like to make two comments. I'm inclined to agree with you, Paul Alpert, that such a change would be beyond the scope. I realize that's only what I think. And that Town Council and the moderator may feel differently about it. But I always think there's two ways of looking at it. You have to be fair to the existing property owner. And you cannot make things worse for the existing property owner than what's been advertised. Presently, the property owner can put in various kinds of uses without it being combined with housing. And we're introducing something that, we would be introducing something that requires that, that could very well be beyond the scope. Second, what we're doing here is we're only going along with a recommendation. So we're doing the best we can with the information that we have in front of us right now. And that's all we can do. If, if, I mean, I, and I just don't see that we would do anything else other than to say. I just don't see that we would do anything else other than to say very clear and simply. That it requires a two thirds vote.
And Marty, I don't have the statute in front of me, but I'd like to know under what. What category that that's presented in in the statute. You think makes this an eligible location? We're too far away from the T.
There are there are more that we would probably if we had the language in front of us. Be able to see how it can be an eligible location, there's the wording is quite generous.
It is.
Beyond a being half a mile from. Public transportation. It talks about town centers, which this isn't, but then it also talks about. Oh, commercial areas, some broad language like that, that I think this site clearly falls within.
Yeah, what it says in the guidance that was submitted with our package. After discussing. Things like being within a half mile of a transit. It also says all all other land areas may be determined to be eligible locations if in the judgment of the planning board. The land area is a highly suitable location for residential or mixed use development based on its infrastructure. Transportation access or existing underutilized facilities, very broad language.
I don't know what it means.
Can I ask a question? I. I don't know, Marty, if you would agree with this or not, and I'm not sure that I necessarily understand the technicality of that read. At this hour and yet. I think. Over having been so instrumentally involved in this for so many years. Housing, housing came up. As an option for this. I think. After the Heights Association's twenty twenty January meeting. When a working group formed, including FinCom, us and the Select Board. And and that's when housing. Was considered as an option, never as a requirement. And that, in fact. I don't think any of the boards thought that. That this site itself lends itself. To the best conditions for. You know, maximum development for for residential use. And. And there may have been some concern about if it was a full residential development, that it would teeter Elliot School. And so. Could we now make a recommendation or a determination? That we that as a matter of public policy. We do not regard this as a quote eligible location for. Todd Development. And there and therefore. We and therefore we're absolved of that requirement. And as a result, we can then proceed tonight to vote with a two third. Majority, do I have that correct? Is that?
Uh, is there's a, there's a lot that you packed into that question. First of all, I don't think we need to determine that it's not an eligible location for any purpose. I think the the point I'm making is if we don't determine. That it's an eligible location under the language I just read. Then no matter what else happens at town meeting. The voting requirement is going to be two thirds majority. Has to be.
Yes.
What what I'm saying is if we just make that determination, which is I feel is a pretty benign determination. That's all I'm asking is to make that determination. Then it at least keeps open the possibility that people at town meeting may feel. Between those who do fear. Not doing anything. With a change in zoning. And those who favor strongly housing. That if. If there was an attempt to make. Some measure of the development into required housing, and I'm not saying maximum development, I'm saying some measure. Required housing, then that might still allow. Our proposal in substance. To go forward. And be passed. So something will be passed and I know I understand you shaking your head, you don't like it.
I don't like it, I don't like it, and I think and I think that if that were brought in front of us. I would want to see us make a motion to refer. Because I don't want to make that. I don't want to have that vote on the fly at town meeting. Without having a full discussion on it, including the discussion about whether or not we be. Whether or not the statute requires us to now have a majority vote in in instead of a two thirds vote, because you got to remember something. Some of the things in this statute are mandatory. Majority votes, that's the purpose of the statute. Was to make certain things. Take away the two thirds suit super majority requirement and make it. A required majority vote. And 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 I think these are things that need full discussion. Need full examination and full discussion. And if and if it looks like that, if 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 Michael Fee holds that that motion is a proper motion, I'd stand up and make a motion to refer.
My my.
Furthermore, when when we made when we did prepare a third warrant article. And say that it would be a majority vote. We may not have expressly. Made a determination that's an eligible location. But that was implied. In our. Decision at that time to say that this would require a majority vote. The separate the idea of separating out housing, it would require only a majority vote. So essentially, at that time, we thought it was an eligible location.
So the question is, what's the harm? What's the harm of putting in our report? That we believe this is an eligible location under that statute. Where's the harm?
For transit oriented development.
Well, for the purpose of that statute, a as defined in that statute. What's the harm?
Think it clouds the issue.
Why? Why does it?
Excuse me one sec.
My 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 harm, Marty, and I've already expressed this. Is that by putting that in the report and putting it in front of town meeting, we're inviting town meeting to make that motion. And I don't want to see that motion. If they haven't already.
Isn't that up to town meeting?
I don't want to see it.
But isn't that up to town meeting, Paul? Is that up to us or is that up to town meeting?
I think public policy is up to us about what we see is best for that site. That's what we've been working on for seven years that has gone through so many different iterations.
Right.
On that basis, I tend to think that. I would not want to introduce any more complexities. We really because housing is not regarded as a primary use. For the for the development. That on that basis alone. That we proceed. With a two thirds requirement. And if we have to deal with something else on the floor. Will have the, you know, advantage of having both the moderator. And town council to advise us otherwise. And perhaps an amendment would be made to a report subsequent, but I. The way I see this. We've, I understand what you're trying to what you're trying to allow on the town floor, the maximum level of flexibility. And yet I think that because this was never really intended to be a primary use for residential as part of the development. That all along the higher bar. Is required, much as I would prefer to say it's not, but I think that the higher bar is the standard and I recommend that we proceed with that.
I I understand and I understand where this vote is going, but you understand where I'm coming from, my big fear. Is that we're going to end up with nothing. Nothing is going to get voted.
I've already I've I've already expressed the fact. That.
Marty, what? I'm sorry?
I've already expressed the fact that if this gets voted down, I'm willing to live with that.
Well, I I understand that. But my fear is if it does get voted down. Then Amazon shows up.
Yes, that's right.
And and then what do we have?
We have Amazon and.
We have Amazon.
Town, that is the responsibility.
And town and town meeting. That voted it down will be responsible for Amazon being there.
This is exactly where I'm coming from.
And and I want to say. That the artist rendition. From Natasha of what of what an Amazon warehouse would look like on that site. Did not offend me.
Well, that's that's fine.
Fine, the only problem is the traffic.
All I'm trying to do. Is set the table so that it can be the town meeting's decision, whether they're afraid enough of that outcome.
That's all.
I think without the eligible location determination being made by the planning board. That option won't be available to anybody at town meeting. That's my concern.
Go ahead, speak first.
I I. I understand what you're saying now a little better, and I appreciate that clarification and what the underlying concern is. It's not regarded as a serious concern by some of what may be regarded as opposition. And yet. And yet from real estate, very recent real estate publications and also in. Boston publications. We know that as a matter of fact. These online retailers, including Amazon. Are developing a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand square foot facilities. As part of what's called now a suburban distribution strategy, which is very different than a million square feet. Which was a regional distribution strategy. A property that's located in Fall River that services. The Cape Massachusetts up to around Brockton area. Through Rhode Island and in Connecticut. And and now they've changed their strategy. So that there is eighteen wheeler trucks coming, for instance, from that and other facilities, large regional facilities. At all hours of the day. Pouring into local roads, this site is particularly appealing to them because of the access from the Pike one twenty eight and Route nine. That's the supply access. The delivery access is not need them, need them's irrelevant. In isolation, but what's very relevant is the collection of the Newton Market Needham, Wellesley, Natick and Framingham. That this site will will supply. Those are smaller than eighteen wheeler trucks. They're but they're bigger than I think they're around. Eight to twelve wheeler trucks that are going to be pouring out. All over Highland, Gould and Central. All of these arguments were made abundantly clear over the last three years. And I frankly have no sympathy. For at all. For anyone who says, and there was objection saying, well, these companies aren't, you know, seriously thinking about it and they know better. Well. Let them enjoy the the, you know, the product of their own misinformation. But we have done our job. And we've made that point abundantly clear. And it's town meeting's responsibility. To seriously regard the information from any of these boards. And that's already been presented, so on that basis alone. Madam Chair, I move that we proceed with a vote for a two thirds majority requirement. For as part of our report. And to proceed on that basis.
Alright, I I I want to, I don't want to cut anybody off. I do understand Marty. What you're asking for. I think you're asking as an alternative that we should consider. To say something like. Although we find this to be. An eligible location because. It is. An area of concentrated development being an existing commercial district in our town. Taking those words right out of the statute. We find that. It requires a two thirds vote. Because mixed use development is allowed. But not required. So that is a possible thing we could do. I think we could come up with something like that tonight.
I don't want to.
I I again speak against it. Because I think that's.
Madam Chair, there's a motion on the floor.
It was not the motion on the floor, I just wanted. In case it seemed that I was not. Understanding what Marty Jacobs is asking for, I wanted to express that I think I do understand what he's asking for. And I put it in those words. Is that? Is that right, Marty?
In essence, I would maybe quibble with the wording a little bit, but in essence, and when I hear Adam. The only thing that surprised me about what Adam said is having said what you said. I haven't given up on town meeting yet. I think it's possible the town meeting. Could decide that they are afraid enough of that alternative that something should pass.
I feel that way too, the eternal optimism.
I think that chances of it passing. Are a lot better at fifty percent than there are two thirds.
I would like to know. How after nine years. Starting with the. Council of Economic Advisers. How nine years of study of this site. With four years by us and five years before it got to us. Has turned into a referendum on whether or not you want Amazon. That's what we seem to be talking about here now, everything we've been talking about for the past four years is out the window and it's all a question of. Do we want to have Amazon or do we want to not have Amazon?
Well, let's 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 talk about that, let's talk about that, so what's changed in the last four years? I've made a motion. We're in discussion.
And we're having discussion.
We haven't had a second.
Yeah, so we have a motion, we have a second, I know.
I just I just want to, let me just respond briefly to Paul, I understand, but but have you, do you think nothing has changed in the last four years?
Yes, I can.
And by the way, this whole thing about nine years and seven years, we haven't been studying it for nine years or seven years. What the CEA started with nine years ago was the whole area all down Gould Street. And that got all cut cut back, so. I I reject all that stuff about it being seven or nine years, that's nonsense. But even in the last four years. Amazon has changed its strategy a couple of times, we've had a pandemic, we've had a lot of construction, we've had an. Abroorious time with the people in the neighborhood because they don't like all that construction and I don't blame them. A lot of things have changed and yes, I'm a lot more fearful of what might happen with an Amazon type facility. Now than I was four years ago or even two years ago.
So.
So I I think a lot has changed, it's not, it's not a referendum on whether I'm that fearful. What I'm saying is, let's just put language in our report sufficient so that if the town meeting members. End up seeing it my way, and I have no idea if they will, and I have no idea if anybody will take up the invitation. I'm not going to propose a change in our zoning proposal to make it a requirement that there be some housing. Somebody might. And if somebody might. And it gets. Favorably voted at town meeting. It might change the whole scenario. And. I'm just trying to keep open that possibility, that's all and but I've I've said my piece, you understand where I'm coming.
Somebody makes that motion, it might very well pass by by a two thirds vote. But I don't want to, I don't want to invite somebody to do it, Marty, and your language puts it out there and somebody can sit there going. I hadn't even thought of that. What a great idea, I'm going to make that motion.
Right.
I don't want to plant the seed.
I do.
You do?
I do, I do.
You want to make this, you want to make this mandatory?
I want to plant the seed so that if somebody feels that that's a way to go, the town meeting, it would be up to town meeting. I want to. I want to leave open the possibility that town meeting gets to vote on that.
Therefore, it's either housing or Amazon at that point.
Well, some measure.
I'm looking at the the language on our report. No vote to adopt any such proposed bylaw shall be taken until a report with recommendations by a planning board has been submitted to the town meeting. Or twenty one days after said hearing has elapsed without submission of such report. We actually did submit the report, it just didn't say anything about quantum of vote.
We haven't submitted it yet, I'm waiting, I was waiting.
We haven't submitted it yet, I'm waiting, I was waiting to add that.
So how, so how, we are close to the twenty one days, Lee, right? After the hearing.
Are you, are you saying you want to go twenty one days without a report?
No, no, I'm just wondering where we are in the twenty one day period.
Well, it's, it's, I don't know, I have to go back to the date of the, I think it's the date of the hearing, isn't it? It's twenty one days later than town meeting can take something up, so it's twenty one days after the hearing, town meeting can take something up without a report of the planning board.
Right, so three weeks, so we. If our report is going to have any meaning, we have to do it within the twenty one days. So.
The hearing, by the way, was.
And I say, we can only make a report of recommendation of what's before us, so.
The hearing, the hearing was March sixteen, have we exceeded that time?
Yes, it's been a month, it's been more than a month.
It doesn't matter. I mean, we've never issued the, we've never been so careful to say that within twenty one days of the hearing. Where we, we issue our report, we always customarily issue our report, even though town meeting, I guess technically could act on it if the twenty one days hadn't, if there hadn't been twenty one days, if, if, for example, you had a hearing.
We know that town meeting is later.
Town meeting, got a report.
Okay, I was just trying to suggest that we should act now when we should act on what's before us, that's all.
Well, I, I, I think, I think we should act, I think we have a history of, of, of voting our recommendations and recording them with, with, with the town, with, with the town clerk prior to town meeting. That's, that's been our history.
All right, it's quarter of eleven. I've got a Zoom meeting at nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
I think we've got to, we have, do, do have a motion and a second. At this point, I think we've talked this through, I call for a vote. On the language, the simple language that was in part of the motion.
What's in front of us requires two thirds.
On both, on both articles.
I will, I will first ask Mr. Jacobs.
No.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Ms. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, and so that's a majority, and I think that's all we need is a majority vote on a report like this. So then we'll just turn to Article seven. And because it's our opinion, it was our kind of unstated opinion. That Article seven requires only a two thirds vote.
Requires only a majority vote.
Excuse me? Requires only a majority vote, I'm sorry, I misspoke, because it's quarter of eleven. The wording that is suggested to be added to our report is. After consultation with municipal council, the planning board has determined that Article seven requires only a majority vote for adoption, because the article, if adopted. Would modify regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures. Yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. To allow for additional housing units beyond what would otherwise be permitted under the existing zoning bylaw. That words straight from the statute. So do I have a motion to add that wording to our report on Article seven?
Do we need that entire explanation, or do we just need to say we've determined that it requires only a majority vote?
I actually do think if we're making a determination that a zoning bylaw amendment requires only a majority vote, that we should explain our reasoning.
Okay, then so moved, your, your, your language sounds very good to me, so moved.
Second.
Okay, is there, is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, then, call for vote on that motion, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we're unanimous on that recommendation. Is there anything else on our agenda? Well, we do have some minutes, oh goodness.
Marty, that was exciting, right to the end.
I don't know, do we have, do we have minutes on the agenda for tomorrow night too, or we can just do this tomorrow night?
Ah, I don't know what's on the agenda, I, I don't think we have minutes on that agenda.
Okay, well, there's just a couple of little questions I had on these minutes. When we're talking about Highway Commercial One rezoning and planning study. In the second paragraph. About the presentation GPI will present. Is, is a sentence, Ms. Newman stated, there are no cost estimates. It's just, I don't understand what that sentence means.
I think it probably had to deal with, I, 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 I probably related to the, the improvement costs, you know, the cost, the improvements that they are articulating, how much it would actually cost to implement them.
Is that even relevant? Should, can we just eliminate it?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll get rid of that. And then we refer to the last town meeting version, when we're talking about. The changes were made since the last town meeting version. Wouldn't it be clearer to say that two thousand nineteen town meeting version?
Yes.
Okay. Then. She decided to use it from, there would have been minor changes to the framework. It would require some additional thought. She, it's just, Ms. Ms. Newton noted, the foundation is the two thousand nineteen town meeting version. She decided to use that foundation and make revisions on FAR and setbacks. There would have been minor changes to the framework. I just didn't understand what it meant, but we can leave it in.
That's what was said, that's what was said.
All right, we'll leave it alone. All right, we just leave it alone. Okay. Oh, there's a reference to something, we're talking about FAR on page three, the FAR is half of the building across the street. You know, comparing the FAR would be posing to the across the street. He noted. That is Mr. Junta, I guess. Oh, he's, now we're talking about the, the housing, the housing building. He noted, this is not an appropriate issue, as the project is in keeping with the zoning bylaw. I think he's talking about FAR. Can I say, he noted FAR is not an appropriate issue as this project is in keeping? Is that okay?
I'm looking at it.
It was specifically an FAR reference of.
Yeah, I mean, I think he's talking about FAR for sure. That this is not an appropriate issue.
Yes, I, I think he was talking about FAR, he was basically saying it was the same on the.
Okay, so I think that's it. Yeah, that's it, those were the questions, so you know, you got a red line, do you want to accept the red line with those few additional changes and?
Yeah, sure, Alex can make those changes.
Alex can make those changes. I, is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Almost.
Okay. Okay, so motion and a second to accept the minutes of January nineteenth, two thousand twenty one, with the changes discussed tonight. A call for a vote, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we have the minutes accepted. Was there any other, oh, the, the Nwari, do we want to, as the select board asks. To adopt. Let's see, the select board asks that, your board, that's us, consider adopting. The Nwari vision and principles and integrating these concepts in your work plans, programs, and goals. The select board asks that we do that, and the Nwari principles were distributed to us. The select board has adopted them. I don't want to get, we don't have time to get into a discussion tonight, we can either put this off to another meeting.
Let's put it off.
Or if we're inclined to vote for it without discussion, we'll put it off, okay?
I, I, I would put it off, I, I listened to the Nwari meeting, the last meeting, I don't know if anybody else did, and a couple of people. Thought that there had not been enough input from the public to move ahead to whatever their next step is. And I think there was some agreement that that might be true, so I, I just think maybe this is a bit premature for us, so I, I wouldn't do it tonight.
Yeah, I think so too, because I think we, we should take it seriously in, in that we should be, also in the same meeting, talking about, well, how would we respond? How would we redirect our road in, work in accordance with these principles without, and not just say, oh yeah, let's do that. So let's put it on the agenda for subsequent meeting.
I think, Adam, you don't get a second, I think that's the, that's the bottom line.
I hear that.
Okay, so. I was interested in this Bridge Street project in, in Dedham, it's where the, it seems to be where the old Irish. The old house, or whatever it called is.
Can I, can I, can we chat?
I was just interested in the project, but.
We deal with these reports and correspondence tomorrow night, which is already on the agenda for tomorrow night, and can I therefore make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is this a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second for that.
Yes.
Okay, call for vote on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we stand adjourned.
Good night.
All right.
Thank you, bye everyone.
Thank you, Alex, thank you Clay, thank you Lee. All right, good.